Okay, thank you. We'll bring the meeting to order here on Tuesday, March 20th. And the first matter is an informal hearing for a new application. This is Chaparral Crossing. Hard to believe it's a new application.
(laughing)
Hard to believe we could use that word, those words. Chaparral Crossing, this is an application for OPROD Site Development Plan Amendment, Steep Slope Permit Amendment, and Wetlands Permit Amendment Rule for Pipe Rerouting and Extension, 480 Bedford Road, New York Route 117.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Tong on behalf of Chaparral Crossing Retail. And as you mentioned, this is not quite a new amendment, but a, or a new application. But as, this request for an amendment has come about because of a survey discrepancy that was discovered during construction work. It relates to a drainage pipe that was to carry, or is to carry, water from the proposed retail area along the back of the Reader's Digest Building, the existing Reader's Digest Building, and connect to an existing pipe that drains out towards the, towards the parkway. The survey showed that there was a sufficient room in the back of what is known as the 300-400 building, or rather, the 400-500 building, where the overhang comes out by the loading dock, to create a new stormwater basin into which the pipe was to discharge. And from that stormwater basin, a connection was to be made to the existing pipe that exists deep below that basin, about 20-plus feet. So, on the screen, I have two diagrams showing the drainage pipe, both on the bottom as approved and on the top as proposed. So, there is a drainage pipe that runs from below the building out across the, the West Entry Drive to the slope going down to the railroad. And the idea has always been, from the beginning, to connect to all the existing discharge points from the site into those piping systems. So, because of that survey discrepancy, where the back, or the west side of the 400-500 building was actually 12 to 15 feet further west than was shown on the survey, we were unable to create that basin at the top of the hill, top of the slope there. And so, we propose an alternate routing where we connect directly through, to the pipe, through a series of manholes, one on the east side of the entry drive and one on the west side of the entry drive. The work that has taken place on the site to date is, been investigatory work to determine the exact location of that pipe to which we would connect. And the, we've been doing that in coordination with the Town Engineer's Office, as well as DEP, who has oversight, as you know, over stormwater on the site. In the interim period since we made this application to you, we've also made application to the DEP formally. They had, their field personnel had previously thought that the proposed connection would be okay, subject to documentation. That documentation has been provided to DEP, and just today, we received a notification from DEP that they have approved our proposed relocation. And a copy of that was, was made available to the town. So, we've received Mr. Seoli's memo regarding our application, and in fact, many of the questions he raises are covered or addressed in the material that was provided to DEP in the interim period. A copy of that was provided to the town, but we can certainly format that so that all the questions are answered.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Bob, do you want to run through your matters?
Sure. As Andy said, there were a few concerns I had with the new alignment of the piping, which I believe was vetted a while back with DEP, because I just like to have it formalized and memorialized and submitted to our department, so we have it on file. That was number one. Number two, basically, a construction sequencing plan. I realize the EPS of that, too, but we'd like to have our own set, too, for Cookwood's signature. Number three, a detailed erosion and sedimentation control plan should be submitted. Number four, provide a profile of the 36-inch pipe. I just like to make certain that it doesn't impact the outside diameters of vertical separation between the newly constructed water main. That was just put in there. That's number four. Number five, I did receive that today, but I'd like to see, I'd like to have all the plans from them stamped as well, so I can include that with the packet that's signed off by the planning board. And there was a hydrodynamic separator shown on there. I wasn't quite sure. That's number six. Really where it went to is I just really need some clarification on that. Number seven is basically just typical trenching detail section, which should be incorporated onto the plan. Number eight should have some sort of minor MPT plan showing how you propose to do the crossing over the main roadway. And there's, there was a dash blue double line. I wasn't quite sure what it was. I tried to explain in my memo where it was. It might be just a layer that might have been left on accidentally, so. Number 10 are just general notes I'd like to see on all the plans regarding clearing a gray limit line, completion of certification construction for all the improvements. And that's it.
Okay, terrific. Steve, you had some concerns?
The location of the manhole encroaches slightly within the wetland buffer area. You know, so as an added precaution, it would, it would be helpful to have the sub-fence extend to the northeast a little bit to provide some protection. And then, it's not clear on the drawings either whether the construction will occur from the roadside of the, you know, uphill from the wetland buffer. It would be preferred that all work be done, you know, from the road edge, you know, so that they don't disturb more of the wetland buffer during construction of the, you know, placement of the concrete structure. And if they, if they can do that, the disturbance to the buffer is pretty minimal. There are a couple of concerns. There's a one tree located close to where the manhole structure is, and the sub-fences on the northern side of it, you know, I'm just, would like to verification on whether the drip line of that tree will be impacted, you know, as a result of construction of, you know, the manhole in that area. And then, the other question that came up is, it's not clear. The plan shows a nine-inch tree, which is one of the crab apples to be removed. And then, it also shows two other trees that they were going to prune to try to, you know, minimize the impact on. And my concern is that, you know, one, they should include the tree that they're going to be removed. You know, that would be subject to the normal tree replacement. And then, the other two trees, it would be, if we can, I think it would be wise to save them, because there's an alley of crab apples along this back road, which, you know, is kind of nice. They're, they're kind of struggling. I mean, they're not in the best condition, but it still creates a nice aesthetic that I think would be, you know, beneficial to keep. And so, one recommendation would be that we have the applicant post a bond to guarantee that these two trees survive for a two-year period during, you know, after the construction to make sure that they, you know, do everything possible to save, you know, those existing crab apples.
Are we required to request the bond, or is that just a discretionary suggestion?
Well, in the code, it's, it's, it's not a requirement, but it, you know, it is discretionary based on the approving authority.
Okay. Just seems that we know where these folks live.
And then, typically, what we would do is a five-year, you know, monitoring and maintenance as well.
Uh huh. So, this would be a two-year just specifically for?
For protection of those two crab apple trees.
Those two trees.
For life. It's, you know, it's a two-year life. And then, if they die, then the regular program will kick in and it'll be consistent with whatever the program is for the rest of the site.
Correct.
Whether that's five years or 10 years, I don't remember.
Uh huh. So, you know, that's my primary concern is just to, and then, you know, just to have them clarify whether that tree next to the manhole will be impacted. And then, you know, just clarify how they're going to manage the, you know, protection of those two crab apple trees.
Okay. So, we have a short environmental assessment form. Is there anything that we have to do with CECL?
Do we have? I didn't get that. I was going to say that we need one.
Oh, I think so.
Somehow it missed my package. So, yeah, that's all you need for CECL.
Right. So, procedurally, where do we go from here?
Public hearing.
We do have to schedule a public for this? Okay. Perhaps we can schedule the public and also with these changes, also get ready and instruct, ask staff to prepare a resolution for us, so we can make this just one more stop. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yes, it does. I have a few questions.
Sure, please.
So, I just, I need some clarification on some things. The, the drawing that I have, you've got something that's labeled as possible existing 24-inch RCP pipe. And then, you draw dash lines, which I guess you are, are saying that based on not finding the, the 24 where it was supposed to be, and you found it someplace else, you projected those dash lines back. Is that what happened here? Because otherwise, it doesn't?
Yes. The, the original intent was to drop onto the top of the 24-inch line where it, near where it left the building.
Uh huh.
It was not particularly well surveyed, so we had to go searching for it. And we found, in fact, the outfall of the pipe on the far side of the road. So, based on that and based on the, the survey information they were able to obtain, they ran the pipe back towards the building where it is anticipated to be.
Roughly. Because it's at that angle, there's no manhole, so it's, it's, it's not really much more than?
But we know where the, we know where the 36-inch pipe is, and that, in fact, is why the, the location was chosen to connect to it now.
Okay. Secondly, you, didn't we used to have a, didn't, didn't we have a pond here?
Pond is where the 700 building was, or is, at the far end, at the far north end.
Far end?
Yes.
So, that would be to the north?
Yes.
Okay. But we, at one time, there was a pond to the south, too. And there's just a little?
There's a pond where the 100 building was.
Yes. And so, right now, that's, seems to be just like a ditch.
No, the pond, the 100 pond discharge is the beginning of this pipe that we're now planning to reroute.
Okay, so the?
So, both ponds are still there, to the south and to the north.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Let me just, for understanding, when you say pond, it's retention basins.
Yes, detention basin, sorry.
Because we, we were on-site, was it last week?
Yeah, I think so.
And we saw that retention basin. It's, it's, it's quite large and it's there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's serving as a temporary sediment trap at the moment.
Right.
It will become a part of the permanent stormwater management.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? If not, Janice, when do we schedule next for a public hearing?
April 17th. The deadline is March 26th.
Is that okay, Andy, to get the materials in?
Yeah, just thank you.
Next Monday? Okay. We will see you then for the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Do we need a resolution, to draft a resolution for the next?
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Is there a motion for adopting a negative?
Drafting.
Drafting.
Drafting of an egg deck. You can adopt it yet.
Okay.
To draft it for you.
Okay. Has corrected 17 times there. Is there a motion to draft a neg deck?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And resolution.
And resolution.[825.02][825.02](laughing) People can't even see the strings.[828.52][828.52](laughing)
You can say neg deck and resolution.
Yes, well, we could have, but.
But we didn't, so we have to do another one.
Exactly, exactly.
But just do the resolution.
Yes, we'll do the resolution. Is there a motion to instruct the staff to draw up a resolution for approval at the next meeting?
Well, it's a draft resol-
Yes.
Draft resolution.
Draft resolution, right.
Possible adoption at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got through.
Thank you for dropping by, Les.
Hi, Les.
Bye, Les. Nice to see you. Travel safe.
Yes. Keep your arm loose in case we need you. Yep, go ahead. Okay, we move now to our next item. This is an informal hearing for a pending application. This is the Bucnaqui Alert, an application for a site plan for an accessory apartment, wetlands permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 60 Inning Wood Road.
Just hit yes.
Sabrina, do you want to talk about this at all?
I'm sorry?
The Wallace Auditorium letter?
No, that's for your information right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess. I don't know what you put in there. Try canceling and see if you can open it. Did you put it in the, in the drive on the side? Try putting it in the drive on the back.
On the, put your right hand behind, yeah. Right in the, right next to the toward.
I think that drive's having problems.
No, no, to the right. Way to the right. There you go. Upside down?
I know. Do you want me to do it?
No, no. I think you did it once.[966.22][966.22](laughing)
Just need a larger hammer.
I think the computer's having it.
Oh, it is. I was wrong. It's over there. My mistake.
But it is over that side usually, isn't it?
Aye. I think now we, you know, there's three places, maybe four.
Andy had problems with it, too. Up top, make it full stretch. Go to the right. You gotta, you can do that.
There we go.
There you go.
Whoa.
Terrific.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Alan Pilch, here representing Merrick and Joanna, the alert, Bucnaqui's family, and their daughters here, too. And I'll just say that where we are right now, since we last met, which was on January 26th, the planning board had expressed its concern regarding the location of the proposed cottage building, which at that time was located a distance of 70 feet from the wetland. This is Vales Road here. Anyone wrote it up top, it's off the screen. But the wetland area you could see here. And, you know, this replaces the dilapidated cottage, which is about nine feet off of Vales Lane presently. In this revised plan, the location of the cottage has been moved about, from this location, about 40 feet to the north.
That's, was it option F?
Right, option F, correct. From its, I could go through that, but I think it's better to see it here. Which is, and it's slightly further away from Vales Lane. Instead of being 40, it's now 47 feet. And the gravel driveway, which was on the south side, in closer proximity to the Rose Rain Garden, which is not moved, is actually located on the north side of the proposed cottage building. So, the cottage is now proposed to be 47 feet from Vales Lane and 80 feet from the wetland line to the east. As I say, this compares to the prior plan, which the planning board previously reviewed, which, in which the cottage was 70 feet from the wetland and 50 feet from Vales Lane. We'll say the ZBA had granted a 35-foot variance from the 75-foot front yard setback of the R-2A zone to place the building at 40 feet from the street line. At its current location, the variance from the front yard setback would be 28 feet. And if the planning board does concur with this latest plan, it will require that we return to ZBA just to obtain its approval for this final location. I will say, too, the ERB had reviewed this plan and expressed its, that it favors the current plan with the building being located 80 feet from the wetland and 47 feet from the street line. I know there were other comments, too, but if you want, I'll let you, if you have any comments on this. Because really, what we're looking for at the, there were comments from the planner and from the town engineer. If you want, I can go through that right now? Or?
They can run through those, I think, but are there any questions at this point from board members, or do you want to hear from Steve and Bob and Sabrina on their issues? Okay.
I'll real quickly go through my comments. So, this application meets with the, the size of the cottage, meets with the zoning requirements. It's considered a type 2 action in accordance with CECL. One of the things when it comes to zoning coverage information is, you know, it appears as if it's compliant with building and development coverage. However, it would be helpful, Alan, if we put the size of the buildings on the plan so we can have a clear comparison of which, of which building is being referred to, to make sure everything is done correctly, so that moving forward, we have a good record. The, Alan had indicated the variance that the ZBA had issued. They will need to return to the ZBA if this is the preferred plan by the planning board, so that would become a condition of your approval. From an environmental perspective, the, the entire cottage is located within the wetland buffer. This is something that you guys have discussed previously, so you sent them back to rethink the plan. So, I would assume you want to discuss that tonight. Parking and driveway access. There was, in speaking with the building inspector, we were looking at the, the two existing curb cuts and now the proposed third curb cut. The zoning code allows the two that are already existing, so that may be an issue for a variance with the third curb cut. And I know historically, the planning board had recommended that they do a third curb cut, but I wanted to make you aware that it is something that they will need to seek relief on, because it does not allow it per the zoning code, the number of curb cuts. And Sheila, I think that was your question directly. And that is, that's all my comments at this point.
Okay, thank you. Steve, or you have some comments?
Yeah, the Environmental Review Board reviewed the latest revision at their March 1st meeting, and they are in favor of alternative Plan F, which is one before you. And, you know, they felt that it was the best compromise, and they liked the fact that the building was shifted further north and the driveway further north into an area that was more developed previously, you know, in terms of existing uses. And in addition to that, I mean, you know, the ERB has worked with the applicant, you know, for, extensively for several months on the mitigation plan, and they feel pretty comfortable that the, the amount of mitigation is appropriate for the site. They're mitigating on a, it's a little bit greater than a two-to-one replacement ratio. There's approximately 20, 22,600 square feet of buffer disturbance, and they're replacing 46,600 square feet. And, you know, so, the board felt comfortable that there, you know, there exists an opportunity to do some invasive plant management to restore some of the original habitat on the site. And then, in addition, you know, the applicant agreed to the 10-year wetland buffer monitoring and maintenance plan that the planning board had suggested, you know, at the January meeting. You know, so that, you know, that in combination with the restoration activities, you know, the board felt that there was a good opportunity to, you know, really provide some good functional, you know, restoration of the, you know, remaining buffer area. One of the things they will need to do is finalize the Sheets 4 and 5 of the plant, you know, the, the set of site plans to provide additional details on the planting lists and, you know, quantities and locations. They, they've worked through that several times, but they need to finalize that before we would, you know, you know, give it, you know, their final review.
Okay, good. Bob?
Yes, basically, the driveway, the new gravel driveway, they plan on treating and infiltrating 100% of the water quality volume, but they haven't demonstrated if they have the three-foot separation or the proper percutates for that.
Say again?
For the gravel driveway, they're going to treat all the stormwater runoff for the water quality volume. But in order to meet the DEC regulations on that, you have to demonstrate that you have three-foot separation to groundwater or rock below the bottom of the gravel surface. And they haven't demonstrated that yet as well. And plus, you have to take percutates to make sure they have proper percolation. We shouldn't want the water just sitting under the gravel driveway. It would serve no purpose at all. So, they have to demonstrate that if they want to utilize that for water quality. DEC does consider, believe it or not, gravel impervious. Number two, they should provide stormwater mitigation for the increase in stormwater created by the gravel driveway as well. That's ST2. ST3, I recommended that they bring the, through, the three roof leaders on the east side of the house a little bit more closer towards the vegetated swale to ensure that it's going to get where it should go based on the rain garden. Of course, that went from three to five. No four. The applicant should submit an applicable stormwater management erosion and sediment control permit. And the amount of $500, I don't believe we've received one as of yet. And then, general comments, basically, as Sabrina stated before, previously, the applicant is proposing a third curb, curb cut. It's not allowed based on the zoning code, so obviously, they have to get a variance for that. G2, indicate the location type and size of the existing water main in Vales Lane. Did you contact John Meg to get that M-scope?
Not yet.
I would recommend that.
Uh huh.
G3, provides a section, a typical section of the gravel driveway, which incorporates the depth of gravel. I'd recommend putting the gravel driveway on non-woven geotextile fabric. G4, the applicant would be required to obtain approval from the Westchester County Department of Health, or no objection for the existing septic system. And last but not least, they'd have to get a street opening permit if the zoning board and planning board allows that third curb cut to go in off of Vales Lane.
Could you repeat that again about the, just for me, if I could catch it, on the septic, what has to be done with Westchester County?
Well, generally, when you have a such report like this, there's an existing septic for the house. The county does look, have to look at it and see if they give us a no objection from the Westchester County Department of Health.
Right.
If it's sized properly. If not, they might have to add one just for that.
It's my understanding that that letter has been received from them.
Okay, maybe they?
I thought we had seen that, or we heard about that earlier.
I believe so, too.
Or else we've seen it.
It'd be in the building. I'll check with Richie on that. Maybe he sent it to him.
Okay.
Or maybe you can resubmit it if you have it.
Sure.
Resubmit it, so we have it in the planning board file as well.
I guess my question on that is, how are those letters framed? Is it based on the new usage, whatever that might be? Is it, is it based on the number of bedrooms in the cottage as proposed?
Would be.
The space of the, the?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, are we still basing it on what, one bedroom?
One bedroom.
Even though the size of this cottage is what, double, right?
Triple.
Okay.
Double.
It's 450 to about 900.
Right.
Correct. It's still under 1,000.
Well, that's where, that's where the county's discretion comes in.
Sorry, can I just, I'll clarify that.
Sure.
You just, I think you just cited a footprint, right?
987, right.
That's a footprint. What about the, the overall gross square footage of the cottage? Is there?
960.
The second floor, there's an attic, right?
There was a mezzanine, wasn't there?
A mezzanine?
Porch.
Porch.
Add a mezzanine for the bedroom.
But it's not a bedroom, so, that's what the, Westchester County?
No, I, I'm not talking about Westchester County. I'm just trying to get the numbers right for our.
Okay, I'll have to look at those numbers.
Well, we need to, we need to, we need to know that, I think. What I would, I'd be interested in is the, the net add from the existing cottage footprint to the proposed, and the gross overall building square footage from the existing proposed.
Well, is it an accessory code regulation based on square footage of the space inside, Sabrina?
Correct.
So, it's 1,000 square feet max, right?
Yes.
So, this is within that. It's 987, I think, right? Something like that?
So, does the square footage on the mezzanine level not count because the headroom doesn't put it into the, into the calculation?
Correct.
There's a mezzanine inside, but the headroom is something like seven feet, six inches, as opposed to eight feet. And so, I'm assuming it's not part of the calculation of the square footage of the cottage.
So, I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I don't know, but I'm not suggesting that it doesn't meet zoning. I think that you guys have figured that out, or will. But I'm, I'm concerned about something else, so I'd like to have those numbers.
What is the concern, if I may, here?
I'm just, I just want to know how much more we're putting in this wetland setback.
980, 67 square feet on the ground floor, and there are two lofts, which are maybe another 300, 400 square feet.
I'd like to know the number.
Okay.
It's on the application. That was submitted to.
We'll reiterate it.
And then, also, Sabrina, is, if, if I recall, there's a porch on it. Does that count as part of the square footage or part of the footprint?
No, it's the, it's the area inside the cottage. It's the living area.
So, then, can we find out how much is the, the porch square footage? So, then, can we find out how much is the, the porch square footage, too?
Yeah, I'm sure they can submit the, the numbers. Yeah, and, and that's, that's part of the reason I wanted to see the coverage calculations, because there's different, different line items in the coverage worksheet, and to understand which areas are within which portion of that worksheet. And, you know, this also affects the main house as well, as being buildable area.
And I'll say it's on that sheet.
Yeah.
It's up there right now. That's the coverage calculation.
Yeah, I asked them to locate...
Building and coverage calculations are on there.
Correct, and I've asked them to identify separately the area of the porch versus the area of the main house. You know, we did not question the, the area of the lofts inside. You know, that determination is made by the building inspectors to whether or not it counts towards the floor area or not, but they provided the square footage of the habitable area in, in the cottage.
Tom?
Bob, from there, I have some questions about the driveway. First of all, you know, it's going to be, you say it's going to be a gravel driveway that will collect, entreat, and infiltrate a hundred percent of the water quality volume. Is there a, is there a maintenance for that driveway in order for that practice to keep working? Is there a lifespan for that practice?
Well... Well, I would hope that he puts some sort of maintenance schedule on the plans for the stormwater report, which the homeowners have to oblige by.
Yeah, but...
To maintain that.
Are you talking about what was in the, in the report where they said, oh, they're going to use the gravel? But the gravel, we don't count it. The gravel has no value.
Well, she's concerned about the maintenance, longevity.
But the longevity of it, if, if it's, if it's infiltrating all the water that's collected.
Not, it's not going to happen there, because it's going to be, I think it's going to be pounded in, and therefore, the permeability declines.
Is it going to sheet across and go into the weather untreated?
I think Bob addressed that before, is that they're going to have to figure out how to handle all that water.
It's designed to be three-quarter inch crushed stone over one to two-inch, like, trap rock, like, kind of like the similars you use in, like, on a Caltech Recharger. That's what it is, so it's pretty coarse stone. And the idea is to have some...
And what's the soil underneath? Is it A, B, what?
I, I don't know the number there.
Because if the soil underneath isn't able to transmit the water to the water table, you know, then it's just going to stay up above.
Well, that's why they have to do soil tests, but secondly, more, to, to address Sheila's point, there are certain design criteria that you can use. That's why I asked for a section, but in his report, he kind of mentions it. There is specific designs to create longevity in the gravel, and they usually have different types of layers on fabric. They use that up by Christian Harold, and it seems to work pretty good, if you recall that. And gravel driveways up there do withhold in very well. So, there is, there is standard, good details that do last.
So, assuming that there's proper separation, and assuming that there's proper soils, the question is, with those assumptions, how long does the treatment, does the practice, you know, how long will the driveway hold out as a, as a treatment method for the water?
Remember, the only water that's being directed to the driveway is the driveway.
Right.
That's it. All, all of the runoff from the house, you know, from the cottage building, all goes to the rain garden, all of it.
I understand that, but if the driveway ceases to function as its own infiltrator, the question is, what will happen to all that water, and the oil, and everything else that comes from the cars that are sitting on the driveway? So...
Okay, the runoff, basically, from the, if there is runoff from the driveway, where it goes is down through the, the, really, it goes... Runoff from the driveway, and this proposed driveway basically follows the grassy area down towards the rain garden. That's what it does. So, it has, you know, like, good distance traveling across the lawn area of the front of, you know, this property, where there's plenty of opportunity there for there's, for treatment to occur, just for the fact that, you know, sediment's removed from it.
So, how is the water directed down towards the rain garden, from the driveway?
It isn't from the driveway anymore. It's only, it's, it's the, um...
Can't get your point across, can you? I think it goes to the road. I think it goes to the runoff from the driveway. Any that doesn't percolate through would probably go to the road.
So, so what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is...
You're concerned. What's going to happen to the runoff if the driveway clogs?
Yes.
Actually, the water...
Just to clarify this without everybody talking at once, which, where does the water go from the driveway?
Water goes from the driveway along the frontage of this property. That's where it goes.
Along the frontage, what does that mean? Show me.
Next to the main road, Vales Lane, there is a natural recessed swell that carries all the water all the way to the wetland. There is, there is more runoff water from the Vales Lane itself that it's filling that swell than, than from the driveway.
It really travels down, not, not on the street. Where it goes is along the, along the grassy area on the front.
Which is a swell which essentially drains the roadway on that side.
Correct.
Public road.
Correct.
Yes.
Can I say something?
That's where the runoff goes. And I, I was going to...
Did Bob have a question?
Yeah, they had, planning board had the same concern we were doing placid subdivision, because they were going to put in some sort of pervious pavers, and we were concerned that it might get clogged up over the years. And what the planning board come to a decision on is they say, okay, let's assume the infiltration characteristics of this is only going to last fifteen years. What they made them do is put in a Plan B and design, not implement. And if there's problems with the runoff, then that Plan B has to be done. If there's complaints from neighbors, if there's runoff issues, and then they'll come to the town engineer, and we might can put it in. It's an option. I think that would address Sheila's concerns.
Okay.
And I think that was her concern. What's going to happen to it? What's the longevity? What happens if it does clog up and it turns into asphalt pavement? What's Plan B?
I had another question, a question about the septic. They seem to be mindful of that. But where's the expansion area? And has that been designated, and is that part of the permit? Does the county require that as well?
I don't have an answer on that, but I will provide it for you.
Okay.
There was an inspection made by an independent septic company. The plans are, and the findings of that inspection are available to you.
Right, but what we normally see when the county grants approval is they also want to see double the size available on site for expansion. And I think it's going to be pretty tightly constrained here, so it would be interesting to see that, if, if in fact, they can actually map where the septic is. I imagine, this is a pretty old septic, and we don't have...
How long ago was this septic put in?
I have no idea. We purchased the property five years ago.
I, I'm just saying, sometimes in my experience, if the septic is very, very old, the county's a little sketchy on where the expansion areas were supposed to be, unlike the newer stuff.
Oh, yeah, I, I suspect there is no expansion area.
I've seen some older plans like that, where they don't show an expansion area at all. So, depends on when it was built.
Bar is just rebuilt in place.
Pardon?
Bar is just rebuilt in place.
Right.
That's what will happen.
With expansion?
No. Right where the septic system is, you know, the soil's removed and it's rebuilt there if, if it fails. That sometimes happens, too.
Right, right, okay. Good. I, I had kind of a question for the applicant, and I, I know we have these zoning setbacks, but if you had your druthers, where would you locate the cottage? Would you locate it very close to where it currently is, which is kind of typical for a cottage, and historically, where the cottage was and is? Sure, sure. Because, you know, we have this conflict right now with zoning pushing you back, and then the environmental concerns pushing the other way. Do you want, do you want a pointer?
Yeah, we need a, and a microphone. You could give him that microphone. Hang on a minute, excuse me.
Here. Alan, we'll give you the microphone now.
You are invited to the property and see the location by yourselves. So, this way, naturally, the, the best location for a cottage would be somewhere over here, which is about seventy-five feet from the, from the wetland, and about sixty feet from the Vales Lane. There is a natural slope of the property, which is in that specific location, solid rock, and it has a pitch towards the Vales Lane. Naturally, I guess, natural gravity flow would allow all the water to, to go basically to the wetland area, which is starting in, somewhere in this location, and then continues farther, and is connected with the, with the pond. So, that's, that's a perfect location, but I guess there were some objections from ERB that this is not, or it, it would be too close to the wetland. That's why recent, I guess, placement was strictly just to keep it away from the wetland, about eighty, eighty feet, which is a little bit problematic for me at this moment, because I'm right on the top of solid rock. So, there would be significant, I guess, obstruction to, to, to put the cottage right in this location. But, you know, I, I, I think we went through many, many locations already, and none of them was accepted by ERB. So, I'm okay with, with this placement.
Okay.
Just, I'd just like to point out, too, with regard to the, a third curb cut for this property, a couple of items that this property is unusual...
There it is.
For a...
Thank you.
R two A district zone, which has two hundred feet of frontage, and this property has, has, you know, about eleven hundred feet of frontage. No, actually, it's more than that. It's about sixteen hundred square feet of frontage.
Sixteen linear?
Just, I had the number here before. It is sixteen hundred and twenty linear feet of frontage. And I'll just say that if we were to connect to the existing loop driveway, which is actually up here...
Put the other image up that shows...
Yeah. We actually had a driveway plan here. I was just going to present that, too. Just so you can see it. Let me try to go on a full screen. Let me rotate it first. See if I can.
Yeah, you're doing well.
That looks like it.
I'm learning how to do this.
It is.
Well, there it is. You could see that if, if the driveway were extended around the, the one-story frame barn towards the, that's the, the new cottage building location, that you'd have, it's about seventeen hundred and forty-two square feet of disturbance within the wetland buffer versus about eleven hundred and twenty-two, so it's about six hundred square feet additional. So, that's why, in our opinion, it makes more sense to provide that third curb cut. There's plenty of site distance along Vales Lane. It's a very straight portion. It's very low grade. And, you know, for that reason, I think it makes sense to have that additional cut. And as I say, it's unusual that for a lot to have sixteen hundred, you know, over sixteen hundred linear feet of frontage on two different roads, but that's the total.
Okay, I understand that point.
Perhaps what I could do is just, I, I would like to actually just, I don't know if I want to get technical with Mr. Seoli right now, but one of the comments I know he had, which I don't quite agree with, is this comment regarding the roof drain leaders on the east side of the building. Maybe I can just show you what the plan was here, just for a moment. The idea on this side of the building was to discharge to the, to the ground surface. You know, I use the term rooftop, rooftop disconnection as per chapter five of the Stormwater Management Design Manual. And the grades are set so that actually, the water, any runoff from the roof would flow down this way, be picked up in the swale and go to the rain garden. And to me, there's an advantage to it. Here, there's, you know, there's the walkway, and it's, it's a tight, it's a tighter space here, but here, there's a lot of room to do that, and it's very, very shallow piping. And putting piping in that's, you know, six inches, twelve inches below grade, really threatens its existence. You know, if somebody wants to put a plant in there, you, you know, the root ball itself would impact it. I really think it's far better off just having the green infrastructure technique and let it flow across the lawn and landscaped area and into the rain garden. I'll just make that comment with regard to, you know, the engineer comment. I understand, in saying, you know, it's, why not just connect it with the other pipe, which discharges into this swale over here? But it, it just seems so, since there already is a swale here, it just seems more reasonable to allow for the green infrastructure technique to proceed in that way. I'll just say also, the, the hydrologic characteristics of the driveway were incorporated into the peak rates of runoff that were done to the design point. The design point is where this large wetland area goes into, in essence, just a, a stream that flows to the next large wetland area. And that design point was where all the peak rate attenuation calculations were taken. And under this current design, as it's shown right now, it does provide one through one-hundred-year storm peak rate attenuation at the design point, because all the runoff from the driveway eventually goes to the stream over here. It all flows down Vales Lane, you know, by, by the grass swale, and ends up into the wetland area, then flows up through the channel. So, the comment saying that we need to provide peak rate attenuation for, for the driveway, it's already accounted for at the, at the point where the wetland turns into a channel, then goes to the next wetland and the remainder of the property.
Just for the stormwater runoff?
Correct.
Not the water quality?
I'm not saying the water quality. I said for the peak rate attenuation, but that's something else you asked for.
Seems to make sense.
As I said to you, the gravel, we'll provide a detail of the gravel driveway. Right now, it's designed with six inches of three-quarter inch stone over an eight-inch thick layer of two to three-inch crushed stone. And maybe we'll talk further about how to deal with the...
Sounds good to me.
Because, you know, I understand you're saying that, you know, the, the gravel driveway is not very big. It's, you know...
Thirteen hundred square feet.
It's, it's pretty small. It really is. And it's going to be somewhat pervious, no matter what, so...
Alan and I will discuss.
We'll discuss that further.
It's okay with the board.
Sure.
I think, I think we'd like to know if the board is satisfied with the current location of, you know, the setback from the wetland and these other, if we have a plan now that we are settled on. You know, we know there's these little details that we need to work out with both the town engineer and some additional information for the planner. But we'd like to get a sense of the board as to whether or not you are being, you are satisfied with this current layout.
I have a, if I may.
Go ahead, sure.
First of all, a couple of details. In your memo, Steve, you have a note that permanent deer netting should be put around the replacement planting, mitigation planting, whatever you want to call it. Could you describe what you mean by that, around each group of plants, or around the whole area?
Usually, it's more cost-effective if they do it around the perimeter of the plant.
Perimeter of, so would it be the perimeter of the, of the wetland setback, or just...
It would be the perimeter of, of the edge of the new planting that we put in.
Do we have that drawing up? And if these are to be local habitat species, plant species, do they not, I understand that they actually serve to feed the deer, right? But they also serve for other habitat purposes of other creatures. And if you put a deer fence around it, you're excluding all of the other species that would not be able to get through that perimeter.
One of the things that's not outlined in the letter, but what we typically require for deer netting or fencing is that they have to leave wildlife openings at the base of the fence that's put in. And there's a standard detail that we use, that it's, it's a, it's a ten-inch to twelve-inch-high linear stretch of open fencing, which allows small mammals and turtles and, you know, amphibians, reptiles to move freely through the fence.
They got to find, they got to find it.
But it prevents...
They got to find the door.
Well, what, what's interesting about a lot of species like turtles and reptiles and amphibians is when they hit an obstruction, they will follow it in a linear fashion until they find an opening.
So, they will find the door.
Yeah, and it's been proven to, to work well. I mean, we, we use this on most projects where, you know, to make sure that there's still, you know, adequate, you know, access to...
So, if we, so if...
But it prevents the larger mammals, you know, which is the key.
So, well, like coyote, for example, the larger predators.
Well, coyotes can actually scale the fence like that if they really want to.
A deer fence?
Yeah. Yeah, then what they would do often is if there's any, you know, trees or branches, they can climb a little bit, and then they will, you know, jump onto the fence and work their way over.
Very cool. So, um... So, in our natural habitat, the deer do get to, and all these other species get to, are the, pretty much all the forests, the, the forest landscapes that we live in. And so, why is that an unacceptable conclusion to, or outcome of the, of the replanting of this area? Are we saying that there should be a different kind of a habitat within this area than is the natural habitat for our, for the region we live in?
Well, this is an extension of the natural habitat, you know, with, you know...
Well, if the deer can't get to it, then it's not really.
They're, they're not going to be able to get, I mean, the reason we don't want them to get to it is we want to allow those plants to get... to get to it is we wanna allow those plants to get established.
Right, and that's why-
To the point where they're sustainable.
Right, and so, but it says permanent.
Well, I, the only reason we'd suggest a permanent is because it's ten years, you know, and we thought that it might make more sense to, you know, install it, you know, on a more permanent basis, you know, in the beginning, because if they do a, a temporary netting that requires constant maintenance, you know, the success rate, I think, would be less.
So, I, I, I understand, I th- I think one of the things you're saying is that you don't want some construction kind of temporary-
Right.
Situation, you want a, a, a deer fencing which would be a permanent kind of fence. But I can understand that, to be sure it survives long enough to get these plants to grow so that they can, can survive. Uh, but it says permanent, uh, that the fencing itself would be permanent. So I would be, I would ask, is there really a, is there a time period at which it can be removed? And we can actually have a landscape that has these species being able to flow freely across the landscape the way they are intended to?
Yeah, I think we could maybe structure so that it's part of the monitoring and maintenance plan, that it can be removed after-
Should be.
It could be, should be removed after five years, or if we want to keep it for the ten-year period, and then have it removed at the end of that ten-year period.
Right.
Maybe it's a permanent, like, fence, and that will have it not be a temporary fence.
Yeah, I mean, we could change the language to, you know, reflect that, but-
So this is notwithstanding that the applicant, as a homeowner, has a right to put up this fence and keep it there if he chooses to.
You could, sure. I mean, it's just, you know, our concern is that they're on the hook to maintain for ten years and-
Right.
We wanted to, you know, make sure that the, you know, the restoration and the disturbance we're allowing is, is, is gonna be successful.
So our purpose is to make sure that the, that the plants will survive?
Mm-hmm.
And then after that, it's-
Yeah, and then with the protocol they have in it, you know, there's an eighty-five percent, you know, success rate and-
What's, what's-
You know, other features in there so that they have to constantly manage it-
Right.
During that ten-year period.
So what's the, what's the status? I've, I've lost track of the, of the potential violation. Where, where does the ERB stand on that?
Well, what we had recommended back in January to the board was-
I remember that.
In lieu of proceeding with the violation is, is to have them come in front of you, and if you were comfortable with the restoration, you know, that would be in lieu of doing, you know, an actual violation. You know, what, you know, with, the way we structured in the beginning was a non-compliance subject to, uh, doing the restoration and remediation.
So-
So we, we left it, you know, we left, because the board is advisory, we left it up to the planning board to make that determination on whether-
Right.
You were comfortable with that, and if you were not comfortable with that, then we would go back and, and do, you know, the violation and have it go through the court system.
So let's, so it's, uh, the, the operative thing here is whether the mitigation that is being proposed is enough for the planning board and the ERB to say, well, we don't need to go for a violation on this, so let's get to the mitigation and talk about that then. So if, if, if this applicant had come before the ERB and said, "We, we have a problem on the property, because we have invasive species, we have dead trees, we want to get, which we want to get rid of." I happen to think that dead trees in a place like this is not bad, because that's habitat, right? It recharges the soil nutrients and all that stuff, but put that aside for a minute. If, uh, if they had got, come to you, to the ERB, and said, "We want to do this," you would be going, I, I know the history of this, but let's just do, do the supposition here. What, what would be, would, would what you would require the applicant to do be pretty much the same as the applicant has done, applicant has done as a mitigation which is supposed to compensate for being relieved of the violation, or would you be asking for less?
Typically, it would follow the same sequence. I mean, we usually want to see a plan, you know, first outlining the extent of, you know, the invasive plant material or-
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, let me, I'm not talking about the sequence, I'm talking about the amount of mitigation.
Usually, what we've, uh, done in terms of trying to maintain consistency is for disturbance within wetland buffer areas, we've always required a one-for-one replacement.
Mm-hmm.
And then if there's actual wetland disturbance, it's been either one-point-five or two-point-oh to one.
You have two to one here.
Yeah, and what they're doing is they're doing in, in excess, and part of that is because of the, the scope of what they're doing, you know, and, and the, you know, prior disturbances, the board felt that there should be more mitigation than the one-to-one.
Okay, so I'd like to get back to the, let's, one more thing on landscape. As a consequence of the clearing that was done behind the house, and do you have a larger scale, we can see the whole property? You have one? That doesn't matter, I just need a site plan of some kind.
That's pretty good.
Tom, do you want to look at this?
If I can add something, uh, I know, Mr. Curly, uh, you're calling it clearing, but, uh, I would say that was cleaning, uh, because I would say that as a property owner, this was just a normal course of, uh, maintenance of the property to prevent, uh, cayaris, uh, poison ivy, uh, which was my wife already exposed several times to, with the medical track of it, uh, and, uh, really, really, uh, unsightly view of the entire Veil's Lane, which you, as a neighbor, probably had seen before previously, so.
Yeah, lived there for twenty-five years.
Correct, so, uh, you, you see the difference, or you, you, you probably know, uh, very well how it looked before.
Uh, fair enough, and I think that we have different opinions about what's unsightly and what's natural. And, and I appreciate the poison ivy problem, I mean, you know, we have it too, and we clear it whenever we can. We don't, we're not in a wetland setback. The poison ivy that grows on our property is not within a wetland setback. But, in any event, there are, there are definitions and regulations we have in town which really go past our interpretation of what these terms mean. And that's what I'm trying to respond to here. So if we're looking at this part of the property, there is a, this is a house that was, is this the house that was just built recently? It was built before you came, but there's a big white house which is here.
Yeah, that was, uh, that's that they had a fire in actually, and it was rebuilt, uh-
Rebuilt, right.
About five years ago.
And then, uh, is this Derby Lane? What's it called, Derby?
Yes, that's a Derby Lane.
Derby, right. And so this is a part of a subdivision, and there are houses that go along Derby Lane this way. I think this is probably the roadway here, looking at the grades.
Looks like it.
But go along, along here, right? And because of the clearing that was done in here, now it's possible even from Anywood Road to actually look into all those backyards back there. And it's one of the principles of good subdivision design to place houses so that that doesn't happen. Backyard is a private space for everybody. It also, I'm sorry, let me finish. I'll, I'll give you, just let me see if I can get the thought out. Um, and so that's part of good subdivision design. And then we also, when we do subdivision design and, or review subdivisions, uh, and when we work with applicants who are improving their property, or somebody's building a new house, we're always very careful to try and be sure that these private areas are screened, and we will require landscaping at the property line or somewhere in that area where it's mitigated for. And I don't, I don't, unless I'm mistaken, uh, maybe it's these trees, maybe you can help me, is there any mitigation through here?
Yes.
Steve, that will actually take care of that, because-
Yeah, one of the things we required early on is to put in an evergreen border staggered on both sides of the property, you know, to screen, to provide some spruce.
This is what we're looking at right in here, right?
Yeah, and so they have on the plan, uh, a series of green giant arborvitae's and, uh-
Okay, good.
And spruces to take care of that.
Good, covered. So now I'm back to this footprint of the building, and I'm just not sure, I mean, I think this is a, something that I, I think needs to be raised, and I don't think we can just not talk about it. Um, the amount of, uh, incursion that's been done, now maybe it's been mitigated enough so that we are content with that, but the extradition of incursion by having this building, a bigger building, put deeper into this, into the wetland setback, I, I wonder if we shouldn't just pause for a minute and think about whether there's already been enough incursion into the wetland setback and, uh, the wetland, and maybe we ought to be thinking about whether it's appropriate to allow any more. Um, I know that there is a, if the applicant wants to rebuild the cottage where it is, at the footprint that it's in, I, I imagine you still have to go through zoning because it's in the setback. It's probably grandfathered in, but if you do, if you rebuild it, it's not grandfathered in, it's a new application. I'm sorry, you have to-
It's not safe to rebuild the cottage in the area where it is built right now. It's only nine feet from the road. Any truck can hit the, the house.
The house has been there for over twenty-five years, and nothing's hit it yet.
There is no street lights, it's dangerous.
I hear you.
There's no street lights, it's dark, you can run into the house.
Then maybe it should just be torn down? I mean, if you're saying it's not safe in that location, I, I-
That's why we want to move back, but we have the right to rebuild, so we're asking for the permission.
You have, you have, you have the right to ask to rebuild?
Yes, so we're asking, that's why we came here, we're asking.
I understand, I understand.
Yes.
So I, I just think that that's, again, this is one of these things where we need to be real careful about whether we approve these things for an applicant who has essentially violated the, uh, our codes by knowingly and willfully going into a wetland and doing the kind of disturbance that was done. It's for discussion.
Yep.
Or not.
I, I don't think I'm as concerned with the, the violation, but I think as, as I've stated right from the get-go, I think that this is a big ask for an accessory use. And what we're seeing here is, in addition to all the clearing that's gone on, that might be associated with this building, or maybe it's just part of the, the property owner's overall plan, I leave that, I don't think it's really relevant, but this is an accessory use, it is a hundred percent within the buffer, um, it is maximizing the size that's permissible, which is not to say that, that's what we always like to see, but it's absolutely, you know, the maximum size. It's unknown right now in terms of the use of, of this upstairs, this mezzanine, at least from what I've seen and heard. And we look at the architectural drawings, and there's, there are clearly windows on the second floor, so whether it's seven and a half feet, seven feet, or eight feet, I think there's some sort of intended use for upstairs.
Six-ten.
Uh, we haven't heard yet about the soil underneath and whether or not there's three-foot separation, so I don't know, we haven't done a perk test, to my knowledge. So we have all these marginal issues, I'm very concerned about the septic in terms of the marginal soils, its proximity to the wetlands, its proximity to the, the, um, setback. There's some question about, in my mind anyway, about the location, function, adequacy of the septic. Um, all these things put together, I think it's a big ask. And, um, I know Alan just asked whether or not, you know, where, where do we stand, are we satisfied? And I would give you a firm, um, dissatisfied with it, concerned with it. Uh, in its present form, I would probably vote against it, um, because I, I'm just, I have those issues, and I think it's a big ask for an accessory use. If this is someone's primary home, and they had to get into the home, we understand that. Uh, but to Tom's point, um, there are, there are things that could be done here before we start mitigating, and one of those is making the building smaller, making it closer to the road, notwithstanding the, the CBA's, um, apparent willingness to, to grant setbacks. Um, these are, these are, I, I think from my standpoint, you know, major concern, so that's, that's where I am on this. And notwithstanding the, the good work of the ERB and Steve and, and, and others, I think there's enough questions here, um, from my standpoint, that, um, at least at this point, I'm not satisfied to go forward. And I know that's very disappointing and aggravating to the applicant, but, uh, I haven't changed my tune since the very first time I saw this. And I, I said right, right, right from the very first that this was a big ask, and I still think it's a big ask, and even though it's been located, I, I understand that Plan F is better than what we've seen before, it is still, uh, and from my standpoint, got these same problems. So that, that's where I am. If I may ask- Sure. I mean, I, I do know that there was a letter that is around, that I believe was submitted with regard to the septic system and the adequacy, and, and the health department's, um, sign-off on the existing septic system. Uh, so is the, the principal, uh, concern here, the, um, the, the physical size, the, the, of, of the proposed cottage? Well, it's part of the equation, because the physical size drives the possibility of use of more than one bedroom. I understand, I'm just asking, is that the principal driver that's, that's- On the septic, yes, for me, it is.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So it goes back to, again, the size of the ask. It, it, it's something that has an according effect, as you ask for more and more, it, it, this is what happens. And I'm not sure how this, how this all is working out anyway, in terms of the measurement of the nine-hundred-eighty-seven, nine-hundred-eighty-six feet, or whatever it is. If the mezzanine comes into, um, into those calculations, I have no idea why they would not, but if they have not-
If it's too short, then it may come in, is there a half measure for it? Or is it just the basement that has half measures?
I'd have to-
If it has outdoor access, which this doesn't.
Yeah, I'd have to check with the building inspector.
Okay.
I don't want to give you wrong information.
Can you check, and the porch?
Yep. Yeah, I, I can, I can definitively tell you that the porch is not living space.
But it's, and so it's not in the-
It, it is not within the square footage.
Yeah, porch is definitely not part of floor.
I, I, I can tell you that that is a definitive, I cannot give you a definitive answer on the loss.
Oh, yeah, it has to be, that's, and it's included, I'm sure, but the, how di, how tall is the basement? Four feet, six feet, some?
Seven feet, I think, it's-
Seven feet?
It's half the basement, so it's only on the half of the building.
Yeah, I see it.
Right, so much rock.
Furnace, I guess, it's not a-
Mechanicals.
Well, it's mechanicals, but it's, it's somewhat spacious. I'm just curious whether, you know, I don't know what the recreation room really is meant to be. It sounds like it's a, it's a great place for a family gathering, and everybody could play pool or, or whatever.
Uh, to be honest with you, one of the, uh, main, I guess, goals to have that building enlarged is the fact that we're planning to rebuild the main house and live in there for a period of time, so if we rebuild-
Renovate, renovate.
Correct. Uh, if we, uh, rebuild the cottage with four-hundred-eighty-six, uh, square feet, and we want to live, uh, there in four people, it's gonna be very difficult. So me and my wife, uh, will stay there, uh, that, uh, you know, decent-sized building these days, I would say a thousand square feet for two people is, is, uh, that's what we're asking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, good evening, everyone, my name is Nicole, I'm their daughter. Um, the longevity of this, I would- Yeah, uh, so, good evening, everyone, my name is Nicole, I am Eric and Joanna's daughter. Um, after the build, the main building is renovated, I would like the option to live in the cottage, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, yep, fair enough, yep, I understand.
Well, I, I guess my thought is, is that, um, you know, if the mezzanine is, is not considered as living space because it's too short, then I think that, uh, that's a flaw in the, in the regulations, because it certainly can, it can work out very nicely to be a, um, a place where you put some, you know, bunk beds down and people can, can live there temporarily, not forever, of course, but temporarily up there. Uh, so I, I understand the point that you're making. Um, I, I just wish there were a way that you could make the building smaller, I believe I mentioned this last time. Um, you know, there's, if there were a way, uh, you know, that would, that would help me a bit, uh, because I built, you know, I, I understand from Steve, unless I misunderstood, I believe that the two-to-one mitigation is for all of the disturbance in the area, and this happens to be in one of the disturbed areas, so it, it sort of moves in and counts as part of the two-to-one, which we tend to use for wetland disturbance, uh, but this is sort of a, um, a, a situation where you're trying to get out from under the, uh, the violation and, uh, and get something to move within your lifetime. Um, so I, 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 I can't live with, with it the way it is, it's just too big. Um, you know, unless there were a way to, to sort of say, "Okay, we'll have it large for a while, and then after five years, we'll, you know, we'll knock down part of it, because we have a solid wall over here, and we could just make that the outside wall," but that sounds silly because it'll, to me, as I say it, because it'll wreck the architectural value of the, of the building. value of the, of the building.
We also have a problem enforcing that.
Pardon me?
Yeah, a problem enforcing that, I think. I mean, who's gonna come back five years from now and check on that?
Yeah, that's a point. So, if it were smaller, I would, I would feel better about it, particularly with the other, with the other things that you've done on the property, to make the property in general better with the, the two-to-one mitigation in general. You know, I, I can see having some flexibility in my mind, at least, for the disturbance in the wetland buffer, where we do not, you know, we do not allow buildings to be built. That's our problem, because if you do it and we allow it, then we have created a new standard for other people, so.
Okay.
Does the board have a sense as to what would be a reasonable size for this?
There are two, I think there are, again, two measures. There's the footprint, right?
Correct. And the floor area.
And then there's the floor area.
Right, and however it's calculated.
And I, I think that, Bob, you're also concerned maybe about the floor area, the potential for making that mezzanine another bedroom.
I assure you, that's well-reviewed by the Westchester County Health Department, but I understand your concern about that.
Well, reviewed is part of the permitting process, but after people move in, the county doesn't come back and poke and knock on your door, right? So this is, so I, would eliminating the mezzanine be something that would help, or are we concerned about coverage as well?
I'm, I'm concerned about the footprint, so that, that, but if you moved the mezzanine and you made it taller and you moved the bedroom upstairs with the bathroom, and people have to go to the bathroom, they can walk up, but it, you know, it's, it's not necessarily, in my mind, a, a facility like this doesn't have to be the most accessible.
So in your desire to reduce the footprint, I make the assumption you would not support eliminating your curb cut and adding more driveway into that area. That diagram we saw, if a curb cut goes away, the driveway gets bigger. That would then fly in the face of trying to make the building smaller. I'm wrestling with what's, what's the bigger culprit here?
Well...
The bigger driveway, the third curb cut, or the bigger footprint in the house?
Well...
It seems to me the house would be the smallest of the three.
Well, as far as, that's, that's true, but, but if you have, if you have a pathway through a wetland buffer, it doesn't disturb anything, except maybe percolation and a few other things, but the critters can still come and go, and it's not that wide usually, the driveway is obviously wider. You know, so I'm more concerned about the footprint of the building, which is gonna be permanent, and I don't mind if it gets up a little three feet higher or something, or two feet higher, but if you shrink it, you know, then there's less disturbance to the movement of, of creatures. And, you know, and then you have more green space besides.
There is a Plan C, we can eliminate the driveway completely and get rid of it. There is plenty enough of parking spaces around the existing structures, if this is the, one of the biggest concerns.
That's the second biggest concern that I have, is, is the driveway, although I do appreciate that you moved it where you did, because you're consolidating, as, as it was suggested, you're consolidating everything in areas that have been disturbed before. That has a value. So, you know, I would think that, you know, that if you could make the driveway smaller and you make the, the footprint of the building smaller, you know, then, you know, then I'm...
Also, that, that, that one right there?
That just shows a pathway. I mean, certainly it's inconvenient for someone to carry something, especially in winter, for example, from, you know, a hundred-and-fifty feet or so, from the existing driveway, the loop driveway, to the cottage building.
Yeah.
You know, there's a certain inconvenience about it, definitely. You know, for emergency vehicles, if it's needed or whatever it is.
Yeah, for emergency vehicles, like fire department...
I mean, these things can happen.
Mm-hmm. Well, the fire department, the fire department's gonna be probably getting this building off of, off of, off of the road.
But certainly it's an inconvenient, it can be a somewhat of an inconvenience for...
Well, and another thing that could be done is, an old-fashioned way to build a driveway is with two concrete strips or, or something like that, and you leave a grassed area in between.
That was a suggestion to Jerry a long time ago. For some reason, it didn't make it to you. You just make, you know, concrete, concrete pads with grass in between. This area is already kind of a solid rock, so...
You could, you could do two gravel strips.
That's, that's all we need.
Another way.
That's all we need.
That's another way.
I'm not in a, there is no idea to make it ever an asphalt or some kind of a solid surface. We want to preserve the...
We would like to keep everything as, as natural as possible.
Okay.
We love nature, that's why we bought this property, but we need your help to help us as well.
Well, that's, that's a nice way to put it. I appreciate those words.
You know, I will love this place, we'd never want to...
I can tell that.
I just will...
When you talk about it, you seem to brighten up, so that's very nice. I, I, okay, so I, in the vein of that, I mean, what about permeable pavers? You're not gonna have trucks going back there.
No, you can do that, too. You can put the gravel...
You get some credit for that, right?
You can get the gravel and border it with the...
No, the gravel you can't mow. I mean, if the gravel builds up and you're trying to mow the grass or something like that, you're gonna...
I'm just saying, if you want to use the gravel, you can border it with the Belgium block, keep it in place, so it doesn't spread out.
Well, the permeable pavers are gonna be, you know, they're not gonna be subject to clogging as readily, are they? Or are they more subject to credit, to clogging?
Probably more subject.
More subject, okay, so then I'm back to the gravel.
What about those, those grass pavers, though? Those, those grids that sit on top of the grass or, you know...
You can do those. We use those at, at Amsterdam, they seem to work very well.
Oh, that's a very good idea.
But there is maintenance involved with them.
That's okay, maintenance is something you can deal with.
On the, on this subject of the driveway, it seems to me that the applicant would be, don't make me put words in your mouth, let me see if I got this right, would be willing to not have a full-width driveway and be willing to have essentially two tire tracks, I don't know what you call that kind of driveway. And the, the, the composition of that is something that you and the applicant could work on together and come back with a proposal. I think it's a great idea.
Maybe a third curb cut and bring it back to zoning.
Less impervious.
I don't mind a third curb cut.
Yeah, but they have to go to zoning for that.
Either zoning regardless.
Folks, you would have to go to zoning for the curb cut.
Regardless, anyway. They're gonna zoning anyway.
We're back in zoning no matter what, for the, for the building location.
They're gonna zoning anyway. But the impacts to the stormwater would be great? And I, my guess is that, I mean, this is a very, very long frontage, and there are no driveways on this side for, geez, another, at least quarter-mile, because there's wetlands and so on and so forth. This third curb cut, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. Site distances are not a problem. Site distances are fine. There's actually very little traffic on the road, anyway. I don't think the curb cut myself, for myself, is a problem.
Yeah, no, I, but I like, what we're talking about here is you, you look, you get it so you can drive a car back there without messing everything up, but I like the sheeting, you know, or the, the grid approach that you suggested. And that gets, and then you could have a small turning area that's gravel, that's a small thing, and then you've cut the amount of, of driveway from seventeen-hundred to eleven-hundred to four-hundred, probably, or six-hundred.
That's a great idea.
Yes, make it, make it two feet taller and make it two stories, and shrink it.
We will say that the grass, like the, the grass pave concept sometimes works, but very often it gets compacted and it's very difficult to grow the grass.
Gravel might work better with a border.
Well, it is that way.
The objective, I don't think, is to grow the grass, the objective is to allow the, the water to percolate.
I understand, but what often happens, it gets compacted and that's why the grass doesn't grow.
Yeah, but it still percolates.
In the granite, in the metal grid, with the metal grid.
Or plastic.
Anyway, I think you guys could sort this out.
Or work something.
We can, we can take you on a field trip, like Bob can, to where one does work.
But we still have this other issue.
Quite well, it's been there for probably about ten years.
We still have the other issue, though, in terms of the size of the, the building, how we measure it in terms of this mezzanine, if the mezzanine's gonna stay or not. I still have that concern, if it's gonna be there, in terms of the septic, because that's, that's an issue, and whether it's a county or not, it's a septic that's being located within our wetland, so it's, it's up to us to, to approve the location. The county wants to approve the function, terrific, but we have to grant a permit for it to go in there.
Just to continue with the existing septic.
I, I understand.
But there's, there's things that can be done architecturally, to Bob's point, is that if you make it two stories, that eliminates the cathedral aspects, sorry about that, but, but then you have a bedroom upstairs, and then where that mezzanine is, as you shrink everything in, you could actually lower that by a foot or so, so that it is not living space at all under any stretch of the imagination, maybe two feet or something to get some deficit.
And I think you could also reduce the footprint.
So if you're doing that, if you're doing that...
Yeah, that's right. So it is a storage area that you can use, it's handy, because it's up on the floor where you're gonna store most things, and, and then you've, you've moved the bathroom and the bedroom upstairs. The bed, the bathroom could be at the head of the stairs.
You can put the bathroom wherever you want, you can move upstairs.
We're getting older as well, so it's...
All right, so, but I think, I, I wouldn't be able to suggest these things, then, I don't think, some of the rest of us have come up with some of these thoughts if we hadn't seen all the work that you've done, so it has not been for naught, in my view.
We understand your impatience to get on with it. I mean, completely in sympathy with that, but you did present it, I'm sorry, I'm not done, I'm not, forgive me, but you did present us with a problem here, and so we're, we're trying to work with you to, to get it right, and I think we're getting close, but I sense that from several members here, you're not there yet, and if it means, I don't know where you are on this, Bob, but if it means moving the bedroom upstairs, you've reduced the footprint, you've reduced the roof area, probably, maybe not, so that's less water off the roof.
If it doesn't reduce the roof area, then don't do it. It has to, you know, that's, the idea I have in my mind is to make it taller, but then have less roof area.
I think that the other concern is whether you're gonna end up with two bedrooms in there.
Right.
So that's, would be a reason to reduce the overall square footage.
Well, and, and if, that might mean you end up with a partial cathedral effect or something.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that's...
From my standpoint, I go to the, I go to the touchstones that are in the code itself, and that is whether or not it's really a replacement in kind, and when you're doubling the space and relocating into the wetland, the buffer, I'm not quite sure it is, and whether or not it's a minor structure. You know, it was minor when it was four-hundred-some-odd square feet, now that you're going to nine-sixty-seven, in my mind, I think we're really stretching it. So, again, I have, I mean, I, I certainly could be persuaded on, on the location. My druthers would be, along, I think with Tom's, is that it shouldn't be very different from where it is now located, and, you know, and, and that would eliminate all the stuff with driveway, because you have a very short driveway at that point, but we, I certainly understand your, your preference against that, so we can work with you, but there's still some issues here that, from my, my standpoint, need to be worked out.
Any specific location in mind?
If, if I were to do it, it would be very close to where the, the current location of the cottage is.
But I, I have a problem with that, I think nine feet...
Well, so does zoning board in our code.
Nine feet, twelve feet, fifteen feet, that's just too, too close.
It's too close for safety and it's too close for privacy, you know, and, and also screening it from...
That's why, that's why I'd like to see the, you know, the footprint cut down closer to the four-hundred-square-foot of the original building, and it goes taller, and that will eliminate some of the areas that are, well, gee, they could be converted into something else.
Yep.
And as long as Nicole, over the long run, doesn't mind driving her car, you know, on these grates, then I think we're getting closer, as long as she can, you know, do some sort of T-turn and get out of there.
Okay, Sheila, any thoughts?
Good.
Okay.
Okay, there's enough to think about.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
All right. So we'll wait to hear from you in terms of when you wanna come back?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, our next item is an informal hearing for a new application. This is the Unger Surf subdivision lot seven. This is an application for a subdivision amendment for the clearing grading limit lines at sixteen Surf Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, the board members. My name is Michael.
Microphone, please.
Microphone, yes.
Good evening.
You can take it out.
Oh, okay, that's even better. My name is Mike Testa, I'm here with Mr. Howard Unger at sixteen Surf Lane, trying to go through the process here of legalizing a pool cabana located to the rear of the property, or side of the property, I should say, that has been in existence since two thousand and four. The house and all the cover data that I submitted in the application was part of a subdivision approval by your board back in two thousand and three, and as a result, the house has been issued a CO since two thousand and five, and as far as the pool cabana is concerned, that was constructed at the same time as the house, and at that time, we hired a surveyor, Campbell Surveying, to locate the pool cabana as per the site plan approval. The pool was, pool cabana was situated, as per the surveyor, built, and throughout the entire process of all the construction approvals, the building permit was issued, and we have gone through the process of all the inspections, the framing inspections, electrical, et cetera, and the cabana, after we submitted a final survey, which was a request when we applied for a CO back in two thousand and eight, it was determined that the, a small portion of the area encroached on the grading limits line that was part of your board's restriction at the time of the subdivision approval. Do you have a pointer?
Yep.
Here.
Several.
This is the pool cabana right here, and right on that corner, there's a small area, approximately five square feet, which has been, in fact, encroached by the grading limits line that was approved. The areas that you see, and I'll direct you to this colored portion right here in, in front of you, the orange area is the area that was in violation of the original grading limits line that was approved by your board. As a result, that, that improvement that you see in orange is actually like a rough grass. It's not really a mowable grass, but it's a grass portion, and I have included photographs in your application, so you could actually see. The area in orange, on the, on this area here, is in fact, that whole area in the back is a rock area, it's a rock outcrop, and that area, the grading limits line is at the toe of the slope, so it's at the bottom of the slope that you see there. When we applied for the CO, it was found that disinfectant violate that area, and as a result, we needed to try to modify the grading limits line, so that we could at least have a net increase of the grading area that would be satisfactory to the board. As a result of doing the modifications, we added some additional areas in yellow over here, and as a result, we increased the grading limits line by approximately three-thousand and four square feet. So there's a net increase in the grading limits area of three-thousand-plus square feet versus the original that was approved. We went through all the comments that were raised by the staff, and we really don't have any problems complying with any of those criteria. The covenants and restrictions that are required by council are not a problem, but we spoke to our council today, he has no problem developing those for your council to review. The issues of, the one issue of, there was a comment concerning mitigation, we feel that if you look at the photographs that were enclosed, the area is, it's completely woods. This is one acre, one acre zone, and this property is four-point-seven acres of property. The area in question around the entire area of the house beyond the grass is in fact woods. These are photographs that I took, I don't know if you, how you wanna do this, if you wanna pass them around at all, or, but these are, they were taken yesterday, and in, with regards to the area that is being impacted, you could see, it's just surrounded by woods in this area.
Here, with the property, yes.
Okay.
Could you just tell me the yellow area that you...
The yellow area is a brand-new area that we created.
No, I understand, but what, let me just ask the question. What is the condition of that area now? Is that woods?
Total woods.
Okay.
That drops down toward the Kisko River, right?
That's actually a high point right there. This is the, this is a higher area, then it drops down to this area, which is the septic system right here, and then this back is the drainage mitigation area with all the infiltrators, and this rest of the area is all wooded areas.
Right, right.
And in order to proceed going further, the applicant is trying to sell their residence, and we're, we can't proceed any further with regards to the CO for the cabana without actually going through the board. During this process, at the same time, we also obtained a de minimis variance from the zoning board of appeals with regards to an issue pertaining to building coverage and development coverage that we resulted in because the original proposal by the architect of record at the time, it was determined that those numbers were not 100% accurate. And as a result, when we redid it, we hired Johnson surveyors to recalculate and actually compute the numbers, which we found out were slightly over, and hence, we went to the zoning board about two months ago.
Just curious, when you say slightly, how much over?
63 square feet.
I'm sorry?
63 square feet.
That is slightly.
Yeah. But again, we want it to be accurate.
Sure.
Well, that was a big issue on this application, coverage back then. Very big issue.
There were a lot of issues with this whole subdivision.
Yes. Your map doesn't show the proximity of your neighbors' homes. Where might they be and what's the elevation? As I under, as I recall, this was, your property was down, heading down toward the river and kind of at a low point where the circle was.
That is correct. This is the very last property on the cul-de-sac, and it, this cul-de-sac, then there's a private driveway which goes, in fact, down further.
Right.
And this is on the downhill side.
Yeah, there was the, there was the river, and then you can see two or three houses across the way.
The river would be in this general location if you were to orientate it, and this, and this is surrounded in this area by a lower wetlands area, which has been defined by the wetland.
Right. Yes.
Right, right, right up in here.
Yeah.
And then there's one at the original entry over in this area here.
Now, the one behind, is that also part of the same subdivision? Or that's a, that's another subdivision, right?
This is an independent.
Right.
This is Howard Unger, the owner of the property.
Okay. I think it would be useful just to see where those other homes are and seeing what we're doing here for the mitigation. As my recollection was that this was an issue when we looked at this last time many years ago, and, and that kind of visibility was, was an issue. I suspect it still isn't an issue because you have woods all over the place.
I mean...
Mr. Unger, can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
The visibility issue you're referring to was here is where we actually were asked to do mitigation planting for the Kisco Park homes, and there was significant mitigation planting done here. There was no issue up here because there's pretty established woods up here that the neighbor never had an issue with what we were doing. Good, thank you.
And you should have less because you're proposing to make sure it's clear that some of that area to the top of the drawing is now conserved.
Permanently, yeah. And that will be done per council's recommendations.
Okay, good. Comments?
Yeah, um, I really didn't have any comments. It's a type 2 action in accordance with SICRA. You know, this is, came in and under a violation, they want to close out the COO on the cabana. The, the original approval, the planning board retained 110, allowed 110, 115% expansion over and above a clear, a coverage that was code driven, in the sense you did not set a different coverage calculation than that was allowed as of right by zoning. The applicant, other than the 63 square feet that they have received the variance for, is compliant with the coverage calculations at this point. So there's no issue there. It's just a matter of whether or not the, you feel the mitigation is enough mitigation for the encroachment and are willing to change the clearing and grading limit line.
All right, one question. You mentioned it's 63 square feet...
Correct.
...for building coverage, but development coverage is...
It's fine.
Well...
Oh, wait a minute. It's 63 square feet coverage and a variance of 628 square feet for the building coverage.
So for the, the development coverage is 628, right?
Yes.
Right, okay, thank you. And so, does that comport with 115% we have for development?
It is less than the 110 and 115...
Okay, good.
...that you guys had approved, and it meets, based on those variances, still meets with the zoning.
Okay, good. Bob, you have some comments?
Basically, if the planning board wishes to approve these clearing and ratings, I'd recommend that they submit a map, because I noticed the applicant surveyor put Worcester County legends on here. We no longer file these in the county.
Okay.
These maps are only submitted to the planning board for review and used as an attachment, as an exhibit...
Okay.
...to the declaration. That's submitted to town council for review. So we don't really need that on it, and we don't need the owners' names because that's what we used to do years ago, but the county didn't want to be bothered with these filings. So now we revert to Plan B.
Planning board chairman's signature?
That is correct.
That, that should stay.
That is correct. And number two is just the same thing. If the planning board likes this alternatives with the clearing and grading, it's recommended that they submit a clearing and grading limit line declaration to town council for their review. And we do have samples. I think Janice can argue with those.
Great. Steve, did you have any comments?
No, I'm okay with it. I, you know, I did do a site visit out there, and the vegetation that was put in years ago has come in very nicely, and it's been maintained. Yes, I think, you know, they've shown a lot of good responsible stewardship.
Okay, good.
Good.
Jennifer, is this, it's a type 2? Do we have a neg deck? And then do we have to schedule a public hearing on this as well? We do? Yes.
You also may want a direct preparation of a resolution.
Right.
So you don't have to do a neg deck because it's type 2.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions from board members?
No.
I think it, I think it works.
I think it's fair.
Yeah, yeah. So, is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for the next time around and to direct staff to draft a resolution for this?
Draft, draft resolution, yes, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, when is the deadline for submission for the modifications to the plan?
March 26th for the April, which is next Monday.
April 17th would be the meeting.
And March 26th is the date.
So it's next Monday.
Two weeks, okay.
Plenty of time.
Well, and make it work. Make, make a note to yourselves that this is the shortest discussion we've ever had on any sort of problem whatsoever. Thank you for your homework.
As the chairman will tell you, you got to spend a lot of time with me already.
Yes, yes. Okay, we move now to our next item, and this is Fluger, the fireside home subdivision lot 4, application for a subdivision amendment for clearing and grading limit line amendment and stormwater pollution prevention plan approval, 16 Little Pine Road.
Just a couple.
It's right here, I think.
Well, there's four of them, you can, yeah.
Go to view. View, view. Full screen. Control O.
You did better than I did. You're full.
You got it. Yes, you are.
Didn't crinkle as much.
Sure we texted out, actually.
I'm not worried.
Good evening, my name is Peter Gregory. I'm with Keen Copland Gregory Engineers.
Can you speak into the mic?
Project engineer for the application. I'm here with Chris Fluger, who is the, recently purchased a property. He's the owner and the applicant. I think I should start by saying that this process actually started last August or September when the Flugers were interested in purchasing this, this property. They were considering a site for a pool on the property, and we had gone out to look to see if there was a viable area, taking into consideration whatever the issues we would have, slopes, zoning setbacks, the septic system, wetlands if any. And subsequent to our visiting the property, had a chance to meet with Mr. Seoli, who made me aware of a clearing and grading limit line that had been approved at the time the home was built back in 1994. And what we have discovered while we were out there is that the, I guess, the previous owners had expanded on that lawn area, created lawn and landscaping out to the, I guess, which would be to the, I guess, to the north and west part of the property. And we would have to be making an application for an amendment to that original approved site plan to get the, I guess, approval to expand on what was approved to incorporate a, a pool. So on the, on this existing conditions plan, this dark line, I believe right here, is the original clearing and grading limit line that had been approved at the time the home was built. And then, it's hard to see, but there's a lawn, an extent of lawn line that comes all the way over to the property. We're, in that area, there was lawn created, there was landscaping, there is screening. We did try and show something that had been created with the photographs. The area that we're considering is in this area here for the pool, but at the extent of the lawn, that's where the, the plantings were installed. And there are some also along this, what would be the side of the property through here, which is actually is a buffer between the two homes that are here. There is another home, that, this is the backyard to the, another property that this abuts to. But we're looking to construct a pool on, in this area here, which we can show.
Is there a home here, too?
Yes, there is.
So there's a home here, home here, how about over here?
Yes, there is.
Okay, we need to see those on your plan, so we have some idea of what the context is and proximity.
Sure. Okay, we can show that. Maybe you can provide an aerial photograph that shows, you know, what's, you know...
I think we should show it on the plan itself so we have the distances.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that there's conservation area on one of those property lines.
I believe in the back.
Yeah.
Out here.
This was a conservation development, wasn't it?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I, I think I just want to jump in here a minute. You know, where they're, they're showing the pool actually within the original clearing and grading limit line. Their infiltrators are not within the original clearing and grading line, but I wanted to remind the board that in the past, you have allowed infiltrators beyond the clearing and grading limit line. So, you know, I don't know if they're, I don't know if there's an area to move the infiltrators so they're not beyond the clearing and grading limit line, but for your consideration, maybe to reexamine how to approach mitigation, but not necessarily move the entirety of the clearing and grading limit line to the back, but leave it where it is. I, I don't know, I just wanted to provide that to the board so you had some understanding because the actual pool itself is not exceeding that original line.
Right, thank you, good.
There will be regrading.
Yeah, that's an important point.
Landscaping. But the, the extent of that lawn that was created was quite large. I think it was in excess of 5,000 or 6,000 square feet. And, you know, we are willing to give some of that back.
Why not alone?
Well, I think that there is going to be, there would be some disturbance that would be occurring in that area. It would involve removing the lawn that's there, and then providing additional plantings along the lower portion around the perimeter. And then even our regraded area will be, will be planted as well with some grasses and low growth. But we are looking to put some larger landscape and supplement what's already there along the back. I don't think we'd be able to keep all of our stormwater mitigation and the regrading within this original clearing and grading limit line here. We are looking to maintain a separation distance to the septic system. We have a septic system located in the front of the property. We have to maintain a separation distance of 20 feet to the pool, and then keeping in consideration our zoning setbacks, you know, we don't have a lot of area to, this is really the only location that we would be able to place the pool on the property and comply.
Okay. Sabrina, did you have more comments?
Just for the board's information, the proposed project meets with all zoning setbacks. The coverage requirements on both the building and development coverage are within the limits as allowed. They're talking about removing 130 square feet of existing walkway. One 24-inch maple is to be removed. There's no steep slopes or wetlands involved in the application. If there's outdoor lighting proposed, to show that on the plan as well, if any, and then it's a matter of that clearing and grading limit line. You know, they are proposing a planting plan, you know, if they're desert, if they're disturbing the existing lawn area, maybe to restore it to something other than lawn in addition to the planting that they want to do to recreate that, that, that disturbed area as area not to be disturbed in the future, with the exception of maintaining the stormwater infiltrators.
You said there is only de minimis, you said there's only de minimis amounts of steep slope disturbance, or none?
Um, I did not, there's not, it does not...
Well, they have two pieces, they have very steep...
Right, but they're, but they're not, they don't meet the requirements to trigger a steep slope permit.
Yeah, I'll review that and put that on my memory.
Yeah, that's Bob's.
Okay, good, Bob.
Um...
Yeah, I'm not sure if they did.
Basically, the applicant's proposing to put in, obviously, a new pool, coping terrorist steps, pool equipment pad, it's about 1,500 square feet, trips to 1,000 square foot for SWIP, so it's going to require to meet all the regulations for chapter 108A. I put down a bunch of things that should be incorporated into his report. I'm not quite sure whether you contacted Terry Road to witness the deeps or perks on that.
We have performed our soil testing, and it has been witnessed. Deep hole test and perv tests.
They just make certain you show the locations and you put that in the report.
Yes, we will.
Basically, that's ST1. Excuse me, ST2, basically, since it's in the East of Hudson, New York City watershed, and disturbing more than 5,000 square feet, they have to get an NOI from DEC. That's pretty much all my stormwater comments and just general comments. I reviewed the steep slopes analysis. They've added in the combined total weighted adjusted areas for all three slopes, and even when they did that, it's still less than 13068. For that very reason, there's no steep slopes permitted in this particular case. GC2, again, if the planning board approves a clearing and grading as desired by the applicant, I'd recommend that they submit a map of an amended clearing and grading line to be incorporated as an exhibit in the declaration. That's GC2. GC3, if the planning board wishes to approve the proposed changes, recommend they have a declaration submitted to town council for review as well. And GC4, the site plan should reference the subdivision filed map number and associate the lot number. GC5, the plan should be numbered and contain the original signature concealed in a New York State professional that prepared the plans.
The only, the only question I have would be pertaining to your general comments, 2 and 3. I was able to get a copy of the filed map, and the filed map does not reference a clearing and grading limit line.
And then reference the site plan because there's an integrity, there's a site plan that's referencing it.
It's referencing the construction drawings that were approved at the site plan. So my question is, do we, do we still, would we need to file the declaration to the county clerk's office if it's, if we're amending the approved site plan and not necessarily the plot?
Yes, we would still need a declaration.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that, but the subdivision map from 1988 does have a note on it. You know, the clearing and grading limit lines are not shown on the actual filed plot, but there is a note that says that no work shall be done outside the grading limit line as shown on construction drawing sheet 5 of 5. So there was a sheet that was...
That was part of the planning board subdivision...
That was part of the, exactly.
Which is called the IPP back then, so that's what you have to go by. So just reference that, we can pull that for you.
So I think we want to...
With the county clerk's office, though, would it?
Excuse me?
The IPP wouldn't get filed with the county clerk's office.
No, no, just the map you're preparing would be incorporated into the declaration and filed down county as a declaration and a deed.
Right, so we'll take a look at it, but the concern is that this note will still refer to the construction drawings...
Sure.
...for compliance with that, and we want to make sure that the record is clear for title, that that requirement has been modified...
Okay.
...to reflect, you know, if it is modified by this board, to reflect in the plan.
Peter, we do not have a tree application submitted?
We'll include that also.
Okay.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Did you have question number 3 also?
Oh, that answers the question.
Oh, okay, good, okay. Steve?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. As you know, they're taking in 24-inch maples, so it would be subject to our tree replacement criteria, which in this case would mean that they'd have to replace five trees. And they do have a landscape restoration plan with some maples and evergreens shown, and they could use those as part of the tree replacement. One thing that would be helpful would be to put together a site plan that shows the proposed pool, the proposed landscaping, and the existing landscaping, so that we could see how the entire site looks. And one of the things that I think would make sense, too, is within their landscape restoration area, is that they remove the lawn grasses, actually remove the sod grass, and then restore that with a suitable ground cover in addition to shrubs and trees that they have proposed within that area. That way, it'll resemble more of a natural, you know, section of the property. The other... The other thing which might make sense is to just to expand the width of the proposed landscaping to encompass to the property line in the rear, because it looks like it's basically unusable area anyway, and let that go natural and, you know, and, and maybe enhance it a little bit with some additional, you know, plantings.
Sure.
And then I would also recommend that they have a five-year monitoring for the tree replacement, as per chapter 121. And they also need a tree permit application, which Sabrina mentioned.
Right, right. Okay, good, and we'd like to see, if you would, a map showing the other homes.
Yes, we can update that on.
And also the elevations, very important for us, I know, I guess this all slopes down toward the, the street, as I recall, down to the cul-de-sac, right? Properties are all above these cul-de-sacs?
Yes, it is, yes, yes.
But again, just to give us some sort of context, where the other homes are, where they're located in terms of visibility of the proposed site for the pool, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, it's a type 2, so we don't have to take any action?
I, I just want to comment about it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I mean, I can see that the property is kind of irregular in its shape, and I assume you're off a cul-de-sac and it's a conservation subdivision, so it, it has its own peculiarities. But in general, I just, I just have to say, I, I think it, you know, putting, it's putting the pool in the side yard, and I don't really see any other place for it, but I, I really wish we weren't looking at applications where pools were in the side yard. So I think it's going to be very important to see where that pool is located in relation to the other home, and to make sure that there's some appropriate screening that's really dedicated or deeded or whatever, that it must be maintained.
Well, I think you raise a very good point, not only visible screening, but screening from the sounds of the equipment as well.
Yep, mhm.
Again, it's, it's close proximity.
The, the equipment has to, has to be placed so that it complies with setbacks, so that it's not encroaching on the neighbors.
Right, well, even, yeah, even the sound though.
Yeah, but the sound, so it's just something to look at when we see the, the drawing with the location of the other homes.
Well, I would, I would agree with that, and I would, I mean, I would suggest that mitigation, mitigating devices to screen a pool in the side yard when we're not certain that, we should approving, be approving that to begin with. I guess I would suggest that maybe we ought to see an alternate location for the pool, like behind the house, but this is why it's so important to see the other surrounding buildings that surround the property, homes that surround the property, to see what we're actually looking at.
Certainly.
That actually brings up a good point, though, will the, will the surround, will the elevations in the, of the surrounding properties be shown too, so will we know if this home sits below the home or above the home?
Yeah, we need that.
As I can tell you, that this, this home that's over here is also off the cul-de-sac. The driveway comes in, how, they have a pool in the, in the, to the rear of their house, and there is a, there is a row of pines through here, so there is a very good buffer that exists between these here.
So, well, okay, so we could, we'll see that on the drawing.
You would see that in the drawing, and some on their back, there, there are, you know, the previous owners had placed in some plantings along their rear yard, but it's sparse, so we'd be looking to supplement that, thicken up that screening as part of that restoration, that area.
So, I have some comments about, other than actually considering moving the pool itself, some comments about the design that you have here, which is that I, I'm not convinced that we need to use, is there a larger drawing that we could look at? Oh, it, it doesn't matter. I'm not convinced you need, you need to use all of this land here in order to do what you want to do. You've got a couple of retaining walls, excuse me, that looks like three feet, and another one, and this, the first one is like three feet high, the next one is two feet high, that's like five feet. I don't know why, perhaps there isn't just a hard edge here, a perimeter, which matches the perimeter of the pool, but a wide enough deck so that you can, you know, use that side of the pool also, have a retaining wall there, put your cul-deck right on the other side of that, or wherever that needs to go, maybe it needs to go further back, but, and then just restore all of this. And if it takes a little bit of grading back here in order to make that work, well, so be it. So, it seems to me that we really haven't made an effort, a real effort yet, to show what it would, what it would mean to try and reclaim as much of this as we can. There's a landscape attitude to this that I understand, these stepping walls that go back down, but that's not the only design solution for this, and I don't think that it goes far enough to trying to restore the grading and grading limit line. And this stuff really only becomes really important if we decide it is, and we need to see where those other houses are, so getting back to that. But I'm not convinced that this is the best plan for the pool in this location by any stretch.
We can look into that.
Okay.
We were trying to avoid having a hard lined, high wall, we were trying to slope that down, just in terms of a landscape feature, more so than a hard structural wall that's there.
Understood.
And we were just trying, we do, we do have a little bit of a, a lawn area, we, you know, we are proposing some hardscape on this side, which would be the shallow end of the pool, and then just above on the top of that slope, that would be a lawn area.
I understand.
Mm-hmm.
But the consequences of that are what we're looking at in the drawing, which may be too much, I, maybe, we'll have to see.
Okay.
Anyone else want to hear?
Well, I, you know, I, I think that, I'm glad you're going to go back and do some refining on this, that it's sort of like the, you know, the, I agree with Sheila that the equipment is perhaps the wrong place. I agree with Tom on his comments with the walls and everything else. I, I also think the, you know, the coping area and everything is, is, is too wide, you can cut some of the coverage there.
Thank you.
And so, there's more to be done here, and, and either reconfiguring and/or making it smaller, you know, so that we get more of the clearing and grading exceedances caused by others back.
Okay. All right, I think we, yeah, so we'll see you with some new plans and.
Yes.
New thoughts. Sheila, I'm sure. Janice?
Will you be ready by March 26th, the owner?
Yeah, we're going to try.
His promise, you know.
Is that okay?
All right, we'll, we'll schedule you as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Based on your submission.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Is that for public hearing?
No.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Continued informal. Okay, thank you. We now move to our next item, this is a referral from the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's Shville, Fiddleheads Cooking Studio, application for a special use permit for group instruction, 143 Armagh Road. Thank goodness you're applicants, I was wondering who you were back there.
They're the last of our audience.
Exactly.
Yeah, what, what stamina they.
I was hoping, I was hoping that you were in the right room.
Application.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Croke, I'm the architect on this project. Here with me this evening is Ranosh Shville, the owner and the applicant. We were referred to you by the zoning board to review our project, which is the conversion of an existing garage to be used for group instruction. Ms. Shville runs a cooking studio where they teach cooking skills to young children. The garage, the, the project is essentially an interior renovation, renovating the interior of the first floor of the garage with some exterior changes, removing garage doors and installing people doors and windows. As you can see from the floor plans, it's a standard three-car garage, two bays on the front, one from the back, taking those out and installing doors to create this aesthetic on the front, which faces the house, changing from this to this. The main house is centered on the property, the garage is towards the rear of the property, the existing driveway is a U-shaped driveway, comes in with a gravel portion that goes back to the existing garage. There is no proposed changes on the site, we're proposing to use the existing driveway and the existing gravel area for the parking. We're proposing five parking spaces to be used for the people coming to the studio, with two parking spots reserved for the homeowner's cars.
Is it thought that the parents are hanging out while the kids are learning how to cook, or the parents dropping off?
So, there are classes for younger children, like a mommy and me class, that will include both parents or caregiver and the child, and classes for older children that would be drop-off.
Got you, okay. Most are drop-off.
Most are going to be drop-off.
Most are drop-off. As part of the parking plan, there will be a temporary fence that separates the owner's parking locations from the guest parking areas, so that they will only use this entrance, they will not go onto the right-of-way that allows access to the house in the back.
Your site distances, are they described for the, the speed limit that is listed, or the actual speed that persists there?
The site distances were measured on the, on the, on the street.
I know, but was it based on 30 miles an hour, which is what the posted speed is, but rarely.
The minimum, the minimum stopping site distance for 30 mph based on Ashto is 200 and, 200 feet. I believe he had more than 200 feet in most distances.
Yes.
291, 258. 291 at one side. It's more than 30.
And 258.
Right, well, it's posted at 30, but.
No, the, the stopping site distances are actually for a greater speed than 30.
Yeah, I see that.
The minimum is 200.
Right.
I forgot what you got, but one was 1, 250, one was 280.
One's almost 300.
Yes.
Yeah. 291 and 258.
I can provide that to you if you need what it is.
So is that good for?
It's good.
35 or 40?
I can check, see if I back.
Actual speeds.
I can let you know.
Yeah.
At the next meeting.
62.
Oh, well, it's not that fast, but, okay.
Okay.
I, I'd make that comment, because it's rarely do people go 30 miles an hour in that area.
In fact, we saw when we were measuring the distances.
30 miles an hour is holding up traffic.
I, I wanted to, to remind the board that this is a referral, so if you have comments like that, that you would refer those comments back to the ZBA for consideration.
Right, right. Well, is there anything that jumps out at us that could be done to expand those? I see that we have some vegetation, some mailboxes are here, but I think, Bob, in your note, I, I thought I read in here that you had accounted for some areas that would be cleared to expand those sidelines.
It wasn't quite clear when I received the plans at first, you know, how the clearing was going to be done in the vegetation, and I think if you go out there, which I did, you probably can tweak the distances a little bit, depending on what you clear within the right-of-way and on your property, and that's something you and I can meet after with if you want to go over that.
Right, I think most, most of the clearing is, is minor shrubbery.
Yes, it is.
Some of that's on town property, on, on the Burden Park.
Yes, just about all of it is on the right-of-way.
And it can be tweaked to even increase it more so.
I, it would be not a bad idea.
I think the only major plants that need to be dealt with are the two, the three trees right in front of the house, which again are in the right-of-way.
Yeah, okay. Anything you want to tell us about in your comments that you gave to the ZBA?
No, no, I think the, the applicant is required to respond to comments, I know they've been working on them, you know, clarifying coverages, whether or not variances are needed for the development coverage. You know, in my review, based on the information submitted, I don't think that they need any variances, I believe it's all compliant. You know, we've, the, the zoning board is setting maximums on number of students per class, there's hours stated per class, all that information is actually printed on the site plan, and it's just a matter of whether or not there's any outstanding issues or things that you would like the zoning board to consider.
Okay.
One thing you might want to know is, later on your agenda, something that was added tonight, is a local law about parking, specifically related to parking for group instruction for this type of special permit. So, under the existing code, off-street parking would be determined actually by the planning board upon your review and your recommendation to the zoning board. What the local law does is it switches that, so that whoever's reviewing the special permit is the, the, the board with the authority to determine what that, the parking requirement should be. So, if you have any comments on parking, now would be the time to, to let that be known to the zoning board, whether you think the five spaces is adequate.
Five spaces?
They're proposing five.
With respect to this particular application?
Yep, for, with respect to this particular application.
Right, but, okay.
Yeah, the code, the code is just trying to streamline.
But this is, I'm sorry, let me just clarify this, we're talking about revising the code to clarify the.
To streamline the process.
Right, where the authority lies.
Exactly.
So it currently lies with us?
The parking determination currently lies with you, whereas the special permit approval lies with the zoning board.
So once, once this gets opened up, right, is it inappropriate to look at other aspects of this code and make comments about that?
Yeah, it's a draft, isn't it?
As far as the, the local law is concerned?
Yeah.
You mean about the parking or about the?
Are we limited to, about the parking? Are we limited to just talk about the jurisdictional issue?
I think just the jurisdictional issue.
Because I have some questions about the, the rest of the content of that.
For the group instruction standards?
Which does, yes, which doesn't, would not, I, I don't think, wouldn't apply to this applicant, but I just wonder, it seems, unless I'm mistaken, it seems as though there's, there is no reference to, unless I'm mistaken, the zone, whether it's quarter acre, half acre, one acre, these, these standards apply to any size residential lot?
It would be, you'd have to look at the zoning table to determine, the, the use table to determine where group instruction, which zoning district's group instruction would be allowed in.
Because the parking, the impacts of five spaces in a quarter acre zone is quite dramatic compared to a two acre zone, and I just wa, I, I just wonder if that's accounted for.
And that may be part of, you know, it's, it's determined on a case-by-case basis, so if you have an application before you in a quarter acre zone versus a two acre zone, that's something that would go into your.
Your comment.
But, but.
Your determination on parking.
But we're yielding this authority to the.
You're not.
We're not.
There, there is an automatic, well, well.
Yes, we are, it's a proposal.
No, the, the.
I'm mistaken.
The proposal is proposing to streamline, you will always have the ability to comment on the parking through the referral process, because all special permits are referred to your board, so you retain that. In addition, the language as proposed in this draft says that if there's site plan approval, you retain parking approval with your site plan approval. So there are times like this where there's a special permit approval, but you do not have site planning jurisdiction, there are other times where there's a special permit where you do.
Got it, okay.
So, but you will always have the opportunity to comment on the parking through the referral process.
But on this particular application, since we're talking about, we will be talking about a draft law, we're still under the old law, correct?
Correct, correct.
Which means unfortunately for them, they have to deal with us in terms of the parking, where I guess we actually have to grant the approval for the parking so that the ZBA can take the additional action for the special use.
Yeah, and you can include, it's not, you know, a formal approval.
Right.
It's, you can include, you know, whether you, in your referral comments.
We support it.
To the zoning board, whether you determine the five spaces to be adequate.
So we'd be yielding our authority, this would be example of if, we would be yielding our authority on this kind of an application back to the, because it's a special permit.
Correct, yeah, so I just.
Permit.
Yeah, so I want to make sure that you're aware of that change, that's, that's forthcoming potentially, and that you have the opportunity now to provide the zoning board with your comments on parking.
See, I'd be more comfortable yielding that authority if I knew what was in the code, and I think that with respect to what I was talking about before, quarter acre, half acre, so on and so forth, because we can only comment on the special permit approvals before the zoning board, and they don't necessarily have to agree with us.
Right.
Right, but on the instant application, do we have concerns with the parking configuration as proposed?
I don't.
I have some other questions about the application.
Okay, but the parking seems to be okay?
Well, I mean.
Or no, maybe not.
I mean, they seem to show sufficient for five.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know if the classes are ever back-to-back, it says you have eight classes scheduled per week, if the classes are back-to-back on any day, I think it will be a problem there, but if they're not back-to-back, you know, they could probably all get in and out.
The plan so far is a gap, but that has to stay that way.
Mr. Bruno, can you speak into the microphone?
Mr. Bruno, can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, ma'am.
Say it again.
Put your wedding ring back on.
It's pinching my finger.
Oh, that's bad.
It's bad form.
You have to get out of here before the snow comes.
I can answer the question about the classes if you'd like.
Yes, get us to reality. Thank you very much.
Please save us from ourselves.
So, at the moment, the classes that I have are classes in the morning for young children and then classes in the afternoons for older children. I never have classes back-to-back. It's pretty-
The time gap is?
Classes in the morning are until eleven-thirty, and then the class in the afternoon usually starts at three-thirty or four.
And how long do they run?
It's an hour, a class.
They cook and eat in an hour? Yeah.
You can come visit.
You have to go to her house.
Yeah, we do it all, you know, it's young children. They can sit down for more than a half hour.
And no knives.
Yeah. Oh, yes, knives, but they learn how to use it safely.
So, I was actually, back to the site plan, I was looking at this one tree, which is in the middle of the driveway, that says, you say it can be removed. Is it your proposal to remove that tree?
We would like not to remove it. It's a beautiful tree. It's, but if we will need to because of-
I would make, if we're going to make a comment back to the-
Can I say one thing? Did they demonstrate the turning radiuses? When they do three points to keep the tree there? I looked at it and it seems to need it, so therefore-
Good.
It doesn't have to be taken down?
Excellent. Great input. I agree with Tom. Keep the tree.
Leave the tree.
We have to have, well, certain protections though, right?
Well, you have to make sure it's not paved all the way up to the trunk, and you have to do something to make sure it gets-
Yes, that's in the gravel driveway area, and that's not being proposed to be changed to anything but gravel.
Okay.
What I would suggest is there be some type of curbing or something put so they don't drive close.
Yes, right, exactly, so-
Certainly be done.
That they stay in the outer perimeter.
And then, you may even have to, to keep it healthy and everything, you may have to have some way of to watering it there too. You know, not permanent, but some mechanism to make sure that tree stays watered because, just because you have gravel doesn't mean you're getting the right amount of water to the canopy, you know, to the root system, which is kind of like right under the canopy, and-
We will be bringing water to the new, to the building for the new use, so we can certainly bring some kind of an irrigation line to the tree.
Irrigation kind of line or something like that, I would suggest. The other thing is that I noticed that you have a neighbor that is, once they're on their enclosed porch, anything they drop out of the porch falls on your property, you know, type of thing. It's that close.
I think it's the other way around.
Okay. You know, so that, I would, I think it's okay, but I would suggest that you consider the odors that are going to come out. How are you going to control, you know, your cooking aromas, shall we say?
As I said, it's not, it's very mild cooking. It's a half hour of cooking, maybe twice a day. It's, I don't think it's something that is going to disturb others. There's no heavy frying or roasting. It's very short classes, so it's not, everything we make is quick, and it's not like it's a restaurant with ongoing cooking.
Okay, so, that's, okay, that, you make me feel somewhat better about the odors and-
And no grilling, right?
No grilling.
So, no smoking.
So, that should be, you know, part of the whole thing is that there's going to be no grilling, there's going to be no fats and grease, and then you'll have a disposal plan to take care of wastes, so they don't all end up in the septic system, but they're going to go to some secure place where the raccoons and everybody else can't get into it, and so that it's kept sanitary.
So, could I add to that though? Are you in the part of town where garbage comes once a week?
Yes.
So, if you're going to be cooking ten classes, are you going to be able to handle all your garbage once a week?
I think we will, yeah.
Okay, do we need to, do we need to enclose it or protect it? I'm just thinking raccoons and so forth.
They need a small dumpster or something with a hatch or a container of some sort.
Compost container.
Yeah, just something to think about.
Yeah, I mean, I, part of my philosophy in cooking and it's talking about food waste, and we compost, and so it's-
Compost is great, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have a lot of waste.
All right, well then, where would your compost area be, or do you have one already?
We do have one, you know, not anything commercial. We use it for just home use. It's by the garden. It's in the yard.
Is it just a pit, or is it enclosed?
It's one of those barrels that you, yeah.
There you go.
Okay, so if you were to, you know, that would be a way to, you know, to show, you know, where that barrel is and what you're going to add, a barrel or two, or whatever it's going to be, so you do that, because that addresses the enclosed issue. And please don't put it on the side between the garage and the neighbor's house.
Oh, absolutely not, yeah.
Go to the yard.
That's, that part of the yard is minimal. The other side is much larger. We intend to use it.
And so, the only other thing is, the kids will always be staying inside. They won't be playing in-
They're not going to be playing outside.
Okay, all right, so, and nothing at night, so I guess that's okay. I don't have a problem. I was going to suggest screening along the one side, but since there's no night activity, don't worry about headlights because it's daytime, and there won't be that much noise from all of that. Now, are you going to air condition the building? Okay, where's the air conditioner going to be? You know, the outside equipment.
That has not been finalized yet, but I would assume it'll be behind the building in this area.
Okay, well, I would think the farther away is from that other house, it would be nice if it could be, you know, maybe under the stairs or something like that where the equipment is, so that the sound from it is deadened, because the distance between the garage and the porch on the next door neighbor's house is small.
That's a possibility. There is a retaining-
About eighty feet, I'm guessing.
There is a retaining wall in that area.
Well, the retaining wall is-
If there's sufficient airflow for the air conditioners, we can put them there. If not, maybe we could even put them on the top of the retaining wall.
Well, somewhere, I prefer the noise attenuation aspect of that. You know, you have to have the airflow. I understand that. So, once you've solved that, then the next issue would be to make sure there's noise attenuation, because right now, there's no noise coming from the garage.
Right.
And so-
No, what I was saying is if we did put it on top of the wall, it would still be on this side, on the opposite side of the building from the house.
Okay, well, if you put it on the wall and under the deck, that, the top of the stairs, I should say, you know, then you're going to be far enough away from the noise bending around the corner to any significant degree, I would guess.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have a question about group instruction in the town code and limitation to no more than four hundred square feet or a quarter of the floor area, whichever is smaller. Was that regulation put into place in the town code to limit the size of the classes? And if so, when you talk about having a class of five people, are you increasing the size of group instruction?
I can't answer that off the top, Sheila. We'd have to look into that and consult with the building inspector, who determines how this qualifies in relation to the town code.
I'm just wondering if this sets new precedent for how group instruction takes place on a residential property, and if having eight classes a week with forty cars coming and going, whether it commercializes a residential area more than one would like to see. Now, maybe on Armonk Road, it's not such an issue, but you put it on one of these cul-de-sacs, and you've got a very different issue with forty cars coming and going during the course of a week for, you know, a home, a home office kind of use. And I understand that, you know, the way we're using space is changing in today's world, but there might be a consequence to this if it's then transferred to a less busy street, you know.
Yeah, I think you, I think you raise a good point. I do want to point out that this is a special permit, and each permit that comes in is taken on its own merits. I think that your concerns can be incorporated into your memo referral back to the zoning board, and as part of that process, my office will inquire as to the history and try and research your question, and try and come up with what the thought process was behind the limitations and behind the numbers. You know, we've had discoveries of why, you know, silver smithing is in, is in the code and how many employee limit, because that's how many they had at the time. I mean, so, so there's, I don't know that there's much logic behind it. I think your point is very well taken, and I think it should be incorporated into your memo. And we will do our best to try and provide the zoning board with accurate information so that they can qualify the decisions that they are making.
I'd just like to suggest, there's always logic used when rules are made.
Always.
It's just whether the facts become more dense and allow the logic to be changed.
Correct.
Okay.
I felt like saying something.
Okay, procedurally, we just will put together a memo, I guess, now, or for all. So, it seems to me, I was making a couple notes, in addition to Sheila's comment, we want to make sure that the ZBA takes into account the tree protection that Steve was talking about in the McAdam, making sure that the sightlines are looked at based on the actual speeds, and maybe there's some opportunity to do some additional clearing. There were some comments about waste, right? Waste management.
Waste management, yeah, using composting.
Odors and smells, I think was another issue, air conditioning, location, right?
And noise.
Noise, yeah.
Anything else did we miss?
The parking.
Well, that was the waste management slash composting.
Anything else?
Parking.
Parking, of course. Are we okay with the parking?
Yeah, I am.
Right? So, I think that's it, right?
Sheila's issue.
Yeah, well, Sheila led off with that.
Do you want to reiterate that?
Sheila's issue? No, I don't.
I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
There's only so much string here tonight.
Oh, I would take the-
Can I just, sorry, go ahead. About what you said, we bought this house about a year ago thinking we're going to use the garage, and we picked this spot because we knew it's going in a busy street, and, you know, we didn't pick a private street because I would not imagine doing it to the neighbors over there, but it's such a main street, and it's right by the town, so-
That's why I distinguished, I mean, because everything that one does establishes, you know, has the potential to establish a precedent. And on Armonk Road, maybe it's not such an issue, but you take that same logic and you put it on a different street, and it may have a very different outcome.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I'm glad you were so thoughtful about choosing the property.
We tried, yeah.
Yeah, a special permit is not a one-size-fits-all arrangement. Special permitting is not a one-size-fits-all.
Okay, good, so we'll send our memo off to the ZBA and, good luck. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have two referrals from the town board.
Bob, can I interrupt you a moment? So, with the memo, do you want us to put together a draft and send it to you for approval? And we're going to attempt to try and get that done so we can get it to the zoning board for their meeting next week.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Sounds good. We have two referrals from the town board. First is a draft local law on chapter 121, tree preservation. So, Steve is here with us, so he can help us and guide us through some of these changes. Can I make one preliminary comment, though? That may actually go on a little bit. Over the past several months, there has been a constant theme going through the applications that we've seen, it seems to me. And Greg hit this during the course of the comprehensive plan that we're looking at, and Tom has hit this a number of times. It seems to me that we are getting more and more applications from applicants who have been snared unwittingly, for whatever reason, with something that is a violation. And it seems to me, as we start to look at this law, which in some cases tightens up regulations, it's getting to the point where, does this make any sense at all if we're not going to get support for enforcement? And where we have a situation where we, as a community, seem to think that these are important. We are all serving here. We seem to think it's important. We're spending our time doing this, and yet the violations out there are all over the place. And personally, I'm sort of getting tired of it, and I'm tired of applications and applicants coming in here saying, "I don't know nothing." And whether it's the owner, whether it's the landscape guy, or whatever, we didn't know. And it seems to me it's high time that perhaps in conjunction with this regulation, we start to propose something to the town board in terms of regulation. And I would suggest it's two-pronged. Somehow, some way, new people coming into our community need to be given a fair chance as to what they're purchasing. So, somehow, some way, the sellers, and perhaps the selling agents, need to have full disclosure for all conditions, all requirements on a piece of property. And if they do not, somehow, some way, that should be actionable against that seller, against that seller's agent, because this is just getting to be ridiculous. We saw this last time with Kisco Park. These poor people come in, they want to extend their deck by two feet or four feet, and unbeknownst to them, they've bought something that's got all kinds of limitations on it. We did, we even put the stones in, and they didn't know what the stones meant. I mean, how can these people sell this and not disclose this to people? So, I think we should put the, shift that onus to sellers. The sellers are the people who, in some cases, have perpetrated the violation. Let them clear it up at their cost prior to closing. If not, set aside escrow for the new purchasers to take care of these conditions. And secondly, I've been saying this for years, just a few of our contractors who work in this town are licensed, electricians, plumbers, et cetera. And part of that licensing is that they are required to understand what the state code is, the Westchester code is, local code is. And I think it's high time that any contractor, any home improvement contractor, any landscape contractor, anyone plowing, anyone working in this town has to have a license, which means that they have to understand what the local laws are here in this town, and they should be required to post a bond, and that bond should be something that the town can go against when there is a violation. It's just getting to be ridiculous. Guys that plow and leave the snow in the middle of the road, block the roadways, landscape guys that come in on weekends and cut trees when they know darn well it's in violation, or they have no idea what they're doing. It's just, it's getting to be ridiculous. And we all know what's going on in all parts of this town. We see it all over the place. And it's getting to be, I think, almost unfair to the applicants who are caught, and they come before us and they have to go through this long thing. Here's a person who wants to put a pool, and all of a sudden, he's got a whip he's got to do and all these other kinds of things, because he's pushing it into other areas, the clearing and grading limit lines. They have no idea what those are. And we're seeing that it's the sellers and these people who are making the money, the contractors who are doing these, going through these violations. It's just crazy to me. So, I was very frustrated when I was reading, it's, you know, the transition is looking at the specific law. As we tighten these things up, we change the regulations, to what end are we doing all this? Why? If we're not going to get enforcement, if we're not going to require property owners to meet the, not only the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law, and then to leave poor people who are coming into this community with the slap, "It's your problem now," I just think it's grossly unfair.
I think that's terrific speech, and I fully support it. And I'd like to recommend that we put together a memo that goes to that effect, that goes to the town board, and I'd like to recommend that you draft it, because you're so eloquent on this subject.
I second that. Very well articulated, Tom. Thank you.
I think, I think there's no more to be said about it. I think that we ought to, you know, put ourselves forward on this issue.
Yeah, as a minimum, there could be a flyer that is drafted as to tells all the things that the buyer should be looking at. And there has to be a sign-off on that piece of paper, you know, that the buyer has read it, and that the agent has complied with all of it, something like that.
Well, we have all kinds of disclosures in real estate, as Jennifer knows, in terms of lead paint and all these kinds of things, carbon monoxide, smoke detectors, all these kinds of things, all these kinds of conditions. It seems to me that maybe you're on to something here. We have a checklist that says, is the property subject to a wetland regulation? Is it subject to clearing and grading? What are the setbacks? Understand what they are.
It's part of the property transfer.
Yeah, understand what district you're in. It's R1 quarter. What does that mean with the setbacks?[1710.84] What are the setbacks? So you have a, a swing set that's, you know, someone's sitting on someone's property, you know you have a problem. We've had, I mean, how many of those applications have we had? Um, though, I can't remember the, I know the applicants, but I can't recall the, the street, which is fine, but recall we had that one application where someone was trying to sell a piece of the driveway to someone else, and we found out that there was a playground on someone else's property and-
Oh, yeah.
Clearing and grading limit lines had changed. We had two properties, we had aerial photographs, I think I had a stack like this by the time we finished on that application, and it was to sell thirty feet of a driveway. This is crazy, it's insanity, and we, the contractor should not be doing this. Your building guy does not let electrical people just go in, "Well, I'll put the wires wherever I feel like and any kind of cable and code that I like." They have to comply, and it's just nuts.
No. I, I, I mean, I will say, you know, we have a, a title search property, a process, that, and, you know, we do upwards of forty title searches for title search companies and private property owners a month whereby we go through all of the department records, identifying what is supposed to be on a property, not on a property, where lines are. You know, everyone in, in our office knows which ones are in conservation subdivisions and may have coverage concerns or clearing and grading limit lines, so a lot of what you're seeing in regards to violations are property owners, not just new property owners and property owners who want to do something, but you see a lot of violations based off of those title searches where we've identified a problem, and that they go no further with their transactions or putting their house on the market until these violations are cured. There are often times, though, when we actually lose a lot when there's no historical memory, when it's not part of a conservation subdivision and it was a sensitive lot or a sensitive subdivision that's not a conservation subdivision whereby it may be difficult until we really start examining a lot in depth because they have an application, that there are special considerations.
So that's the existing process, so can we, is it reasonable to supplement it by, in some form, uh, by some requirements of the kind that Bob's talking about?
Well, and not only that, in a, in a, in a manner that does not impose additional work and responsibility on the town.
Yeah.
But it poses that on the seller, it poses on the seller's agent-
I agree.
It poses on the attorneys.
Aren't we hearing, though, that some of these new homeowners, when they buy their home and they come in here, that that's when they're discovering that there was a problem-
Correct.
That a previous seller didn't-
Yes.
-disclose, and they may not even have known of. I mean, I, I think there's a, I mean, I just bought a house in the town in August, and it was impossible getting the seller to even tell me if the house was white or red.
Well, that's-
It's because, uh, just because sometimes they don't want to tell you stuff.
I understand, but if, if, you know, just as there are certain rules on, on certain kinds of disclosure, if this is part of the requirement, and if it's actionable, if you don't, I think you don't take care of it.
The person with the rocks, I don't know if a lot of people who buy a home, they go in the backyard and they see those rocks, they just mostly think they're ornamental rocks.
I agree, I agree, that's the problem.
I mean, we, half of people who are buying homes don't know their septic systems and that they have to maintain septic systems.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so it's a matter of, I, I think that this is a worthy discussion, I know, I'm not sure where this discussion belongs, um, you know, you're reviewing changes to a tree permit, and, and Jen, you may have suggestions, because I think this is a very important discussion to be had on how processes potentially could be changed, liability put someplace else. I, you know, I, I support the, "Please don't give us any more work than we're already doing, we're already drowning," aspect of your, your direction of your conversation, um, but, you know, it is something that is very important, and if there's a way to have, have property owners take more responsibility for the types of properties that they own and the restrictions on those properties, I think it would be greatly beneficial.
The people, the, the people who, no, the people who are buying aren't aware of what they're buying, the people who are selling aren't aware of what they're selling.
Correct.
Yep, it's a problem.
No, no.
But I think-
And it's sort of a, you know, the, the bad history just sort of builds on itself, and, and the institutional memory's gone.
I think the, the professionals really have the obligation, so the agents, you know, that, that are selling the property, I think that's, you know, that's part of the problem, and I think they're the ones that have the obligation, the property owner obviously should be on notice of what restrictions are on their own property, you know, buyer beware, you should know what you, what you've purchased and what you are purchasing.
So you put the onus on the, on the, like, the real estate agent, for example, who already has a license, right?
Exactly, so.
And that person is then responsible to know the history and the condition of the property.
Right, so I think it's, it's a, sort of maybe a threefold process. One is the importance of, and I think this board does an excellent job of this, note, like, uh, basically creating a good record. Your resolutions are meticulous, you are very good at making sure that notes that are important for the future enforcement, maintenance of the property are on the site plan, um, so I think as many locations as you put those, um, you know, that those requirements is, is only to the benefit of the town and to the potential purchasers of the property so people are on notice. I think also the declarations that you require to be recorded in the county clerk's office, that's what the title company is going to pick up on, and that is more likely to be picked up on than something filed in, you know, in town hall.
And then downstream, I completely agree that, uh, the licensing of contractors who come, it's their responsibility to be sure that they are doing things according to them.
Right, so it's the, creating a good record, and then it's potentially code revisions to put these requirements in, in the onus on the professionals, the contractors, to get licenses, the agents to, to make sure they're disclosing, and then, I mean, this is sort of a tertiary thing, but just like an educational drive for existing residents and making sure people understand what these things are.
Yep.
What form that takes, I don't know.
And see, my concern was in looking at this proposed law change, was that, um, I, I certainly have no problems on this, if ERB is proposing this, and for example, lowering the standard from twenty-four inches to eighteen inches on specimen trees, terrific, but by the time we finish here, if there's more than seventy-five people in this town who know that, that we've done that, and know what that means, and whether or not it impacts them at all in their property, I'd be surprised, and that's the problem, and, you know, so why, why do we do this with our regulations if we recognize we have a notice issue, we have an enforcement issue, we have a knowledge issue, we have an education issue? So, um, I, I'll, I certainly support the changes that the ERBs come up with and SEVA's come up with, terrific, but, you know, all we're going to do is have more of these people coming in here saying, "I had no idea when I cut this eighteen-inch tree down that I'm now had to come before you guys," or Steve or ERB.
So what's the next step here?
So, yeah, my suggestion is, next step from here is-
Count your point before, before we leave this step. I, I, I support a lot of what's said, and I support a lot of what's in here, although I do have some questions about things. But I wonder if by making things increasingly restrictive, if we are, and then possibly putting this, you know, this further red flag up for buyers and sellers of all the things that you cannot do in Newcastle, if we are disadvantaging our, our, our housing market relative to other communities around here by becoming overly burdensome in, in various ways.
That's, that's a great point, but that means, what have we done with our legislation?
Well, I have some questions.
Well, exactly, okay.
Well, I-
Very fair.
I think it would be helpful to have Steve go through what the changes are, because while some of them may appear to be more restrictive, it's really not. You know, there's reasons why these changes are coming before you have been presented to the town board, and, you know, I think you need to hear from Steve kind of what, what the rationale behind that is, because it may help frame your comments.
What I'd, what I'd like to recommend is, I mean, if people want to, want to go through it line by line, that's fine, but I've been through it line by line, and I have some specific things to talk to Steve about. I'm not sure that I need to go through all of it, because most of it is, I mean, almost all of it is just fine with me, I think I understand it.
Can we back up just for one second before we go into the, the tree law? Just to kind of wrap up the enforcement, notice, disclosure, education discussion that we just had, I think the next step, if you want to move forward on that, would be, as you suggested, a memo from the planning board expressing your viewpoint, making a recommendation to the town board that this be investigated as far as code revisions, and then the town board can decide whether they want to-
I think, yeah, and I, I think in fairness to, to Sheila's, uh, comment, that there ought to be a caveat in there, which recognizes a, a concern about, about the restrictiveness of, uh, I mean, I, I, I don't share that concern, but I think that, that ought to be in the memo so that we're, you know, we're putting that out there.
And I think actually our intent is to help buyers, so buyers know when they, they, you know, what they're, what they're getting, you know?
But the very fact that so many things are on the book, and, and it's difficult maybe sometimes to get a pool in, might say to a buyer, "God, if I, if I can't get a pool in, maybe I should just look in another community if it's that hard to get a pool."
Well, you're the one who wants to be sure the pools are in the backyard.
I do.
Making a note of self-
Only the right kind of water.
Okay.
But I, I think we can go through this fast, I mean, I don't have-
Would you want to go through the, the memo that just highlights the changes?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, do that.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, page two.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Well, I have a question on that.
Question about that, too.
Yeah, I, the, the last sentence, uh, you know, gets me that, uh, the, the zoning board is the approving authority for any permit for, uh, for tree removal, and I don't follow the last line, I think it can be revised. Unless there's an application, uh, that, that is not subject to any other planning board permit, and I want to be specific and say, for example, E.G., wetlands or steep slopes, because if there are wetlands or steep slopes, then I don't think the zoning board should look at the tree removal in, in, uh, you know, in a narrow binder, because a lot of these things, you know, are related. And I don't mind from an efficiency point of view, they do the trees, because with your expert advice, that can be handled.
It's kind of meant to be included up above where it says other environmental, none of you want to spell it out?
I, yeah, I do. I mean, because you say, well, it's, it's a special permit or other environmental permit, you know, that's one thing, but then the next sentence comes down and says, "The ZBA, uh, you know, will be the approval authority for, for tree permit," and then it goes to "any planning board permit."
Well, I think the last application, the Fiddlehead's application is a perfect example of this, so that's a special permit, that's before the zoning board, they don't have an environmental permit before your board, but that, if, say that, um, that tree in the driveway had to come down, the zoning board would be the approval authority for that tree to come down rather than that coming to you guys-
Right.
-just for a tree, yeah.
All right, but I, I think, I want to just nail it more.
Would it apply in cases where it's not just an isolated tree, but, I mean, would it apply to cases, like, if there's clearing or if there's-
Any tree application.
Yeah, so, I thought tree applications were the planning boards.
They were.
Or Steve's, if it doesn't meet muster to, to come to us.
Steve has taken over a lot of that over the last few years and done a great job, and, and I don't have a problem with him doing it. The, uh, of course, if, when he retires, then we have to reconsider a lot of this stuff, and I get to that later, but I'm done with page two.
I've mentioned, uh, for hazardous trees, you know, and then for ornamental trees, it goes from twelve to eight inches in diameter.
Do we have any idea what that is going to do in terms of the number of applications or what we're trying to do with that?
Not very much, I don't think it'll change. The only difference is when, when you go to tree replacement, um, you know, the, it, it affects the potential percentage of replacement, you know, that's where it'll come into play. I mean, one of the thoughts was to, you know, pick up trees that are eighteen inches is, you know, based on science indicates that it, you know, it's a tree that's pretty mature and well-established and, you know, is, is going to be sustainable. You know, twenty-four inches works as well, but, you know, science seems to indicate that, you know, younger diameter trees are actually providing that service just as well, so. So that was the impetus for the change, and then, um, I wanted to give something for specimen trees a little bit extra leverage, and so modifying the tree replacement, you know, for specimen trees will keep the fifty percent replacement, but anything less than eighteen inches, it, it's down to twenty-five percent, because my experience is that for the average homeowner, it can be quite a burden to do the tree replacement if they're doing a modest addition or, you know, something, and it can get quite costly for them, and, and what I find is it usually alienates them towards the town instead of, you know, respecting it. And what my experience has been is the planning board is where we get the majority of the, the real tree impacts and, you know, the replacement, and that seems to come more at that level.
I want to, I, I have a whole bunch of real-life experiences that I want to discuss tonight, because I've done a lot of work with Steve on my property with trees. So I don't know, Steve, if you remember when, um, I first came to you with a wetland permit to do a tree removal and replacement back in, I think it was two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight, and one of the things I wanted to do, which you allowed me to do, was I had four massive white pines in my backyard that were very close to the house that actually caused an extensive amount of mildew damage on my house and blocked out so much sunlight that we felt like the, um, the house was just choking on, with those trees. And you allowed us, there, I don't know if there was a tree, uh, uh, you know, a caliper inch tree replacement program in the code at that point, but you allowed us to take those trees down, uh, and we replaced them with two birch, river birch trees, which are just delightful. So how, so there, I wanted to take down a lot of caliper inches, and I wanted them to stay down, you know, purposely. How would something like that be accommodated in the current replacement formulas?
Well, when I do an assessment, I always look at, you know, the condition and location of the tree as part of the criteria for determining a permit. You know, I try to take all those factors into consideration, and, you know, the safety hazard, you know, that we look at, you know, in trees, we always look at the target, what is the, the target, is it a house, or is there safety to the neighbor, or that kind of thing? So that's part of what's included when I look at it, and then, you know, I have a personal bias, because I'm not a big fan of white pines anywhere near people's properties, you know, because they become lollipops and we spend the majority of our tree budget on removing, you know, evergreens that snap during storm events, you know, and they, you know, lose all their effectiveness as a visual screen as they get older, you know, and they're the cheapest for developers to put in, but, you know, long-term, they create a lot of problems, so, so I try to factor those kind of things into it, I mean, whether it's a Norway maple or whether it's a, you know, a nice, you know, native tree, you know, that will usually, you know, give it a little bit more importance, and, and I, and I also try to balance it with, you know, what the homeowner's objective is. You know, I mean, and if it's, you know, if it's a genuine concern or need, you know, I think it's important to factor that in.
So if you wanted to cut down a bunch of trees into a garden for vegetables, but you didn't want to put trees back, you would have the discretion to work with the applicant on that?
I, I can, I mean, but we, that's why we created the tree bank, too, as a, as an option, you know, for individuals to-
So I want to get to that.
My preference is always to try to force the homeowner to put some trees, trees back, you know, and in, in rare cases, we get a few applications where they really don't want to do that, and then it becomes a tree bank.
So this language, I'm mistaken, I'm on page ten, uh, C, we're talking about the replacement fifty percent, that's C two, for example.
Oh, I got comments on B before you get to-
Oh, no, it's fine, but we're talking about this right now, so, I, I do two comments ahead of that, but just getting to the, to the replacement part of it, fifty percent, you had mentioned, and then for the balance, there is a calculation of a factor that goes into the tree bank, two hundred dollars?
Right.
Just, just let me finish my question. So, I'd, I guess, I'd, this fifty percent number, uh, comes up, and it's subject to replacement of fifty percent of the aggregate diameter of the trees removed, now that's, that's a hard number, fifty percent. And is it, are they required to meet that, or do you have the discretion to say, apparently you have the discretion to say, "No, if you can't meet that, then we're going to find a way to work with you."
And the, the way I've been interpreting, based on the code, is, you know, do an assessment of all the trees that are proposed to be removed.
Do you have, do you have the, you have the discretion to do that?
Well, what I look at, which may change that number a little bit, is if there's any hazardous trees-
That's fine.
Or dead trees, anything else, but yes.
All I need is a yes or no answer.
Otherwise, I don't have the discretion.
Okay.
Oh, you don't?
You don't?
I mean, the code says that it has to be fifty percent.
Four.
What we tried, what I put in here, and what we try to follow, you know, with, with other arborists or people that have been submitting the applications, is that it's a determination of the tree's health, you know, whether it's fair condition or better.
That's fine, let me, I'm sorry.
And those are standards.
Let me get to my question, okay? And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't need all that detail. Let me just get to the question. Why, it, why isn't it seventy-five percent? I mean, what, let me finish the question.
I'll give you the history of that.
Let me, okay, let me just finish. The reason I'm saying this is that I've had this concern about this tree bank notion, and I understand there's real value to that, right? Because we can, you know, put trees where we otherwise don't have them and need them, but I've also felt that, that this is, and I've used this term before, and it's hyperbole, but there's this song, "Put, take all the trees, put them in a tree museum," and I wonder if we aren't really, the consequences, unintended consequences, we're transforming our landscape by saying, "We're taking all this habitat here, and it's okay if you move fifty percent of that habitat to over here," and the, and the decision to move it into someplace else, I don't know, but I suspect that it's not based on some overall mapping of the habitat corridors we have contributing to that network, that ecosystem, it's just that maybe, well, we'd like some more trees in this park over here, or we need some street trees over here. And I guess I'm wondering why the fifty percent, why we couldn't say, "Well, you have to put as many trees as we can fit back on the property, if it ends up being seventy-five percent, fine," but that the, the, the objective here is to maintain as much as we can the habitat and the tree canopy that we have, uh, but at the same time, allow- the habitat and the tree canopy that we have, but at the same time allowing for human habitation.
I have a suggestion for you. I think we've had many times we've discussed, we've had an applicant, they want to put as much trees on the property as they can. But every so often we come across, you just can't squeeze two pounds of bone on a one-pound site. So our default is tree bank. And I've heard at least three or four times, I'll say, boy, I wish we could take some of that and do it locally in the neighborhood to enhance that neighborhood. So I was wondering, on the, on the tree replacement one where you say, do it on the site, put it to a tree bank, or maybe that authority has the ability to plant trees in that neighborhood.
Where would you put it? Where'd you put them? On somebody's property? It has to be on the street.
Or town property.
I would think it would have to be the right of ways or the town property.
Well, it'd be the street trees, it'd be street trees.
But if it's on the right of way, it's going right up into the wires.
We had that guy who wanted to do all those trees, you know, that nice street. We're like, oh, let's put those trees on the nice street in the neighborhood, they would love it. But we couldn't do it because we didn't have the right to do that.
So, yeah, I remember.
That's not going to change, that would still be town board approval authority for what goes in the right of way.
See, that, that's already here. That's already here.
But one thing I wanted to mention. And then the town board decides where to spend the money. So there is a discrepancy that relates to the discretionary thing that you guys were just talking about. And there's a discrepancy in the code where if you look at tree replacement section 121-6B, that's where it says tree replacement shall be required.
What page are you on?
Where are you?
Page nine.
Page nine at the bottom.
Yep, at the bottom.
Yeah, I got that note also.
Tree replacement shall be required onsite unless the approval authority determines that because of site constraints, it's impractical or impossible to fully meet the mitigation requirements onsite, right? But then if you look at the tree bank section on page 12, section 121-8 in section A.
Yep.
It says that the tree bank shall be a fund, blah, 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 which can receive in lieu payments from applicants to satisfy tree replacement requirements as set forth previously, which cannot be met onsite due to existing site limitation or because the applicant chooses not to fulfill the tree replacement requirements by planting trees onsite. So this is a little looser than what is stated in the tree replacement section. The tree bank section allows the applicant to decide, I don't want to plant all these trees back on my property, so I'm just going to pay the in lieu fee. Whereas the tree replacement requirement says, no, you have to plant those trees onsite unless it's impossible to do so.
And my further concern is it says only 50%. And I, I think it ought to be at our discretion instead of 50% or at Steve's discretion, whoever the approving authority ends up being, rather than saying you only have to 50%.
Back when we did the initial amendments in 2011 and 12, you know, that discussion came up as far as how to determine a percentage of replacement. You know, and we started at 100% and looked at, you know, those numbers and, you know, felt, you know, there were two things. One is the cost, you know, to the homeowner or individual, you know, to replace 100%. And then the second thing was from a, you know, just from an ecology standpoint, you know, and there's been a lot of formulas looking at how many trees per acre, you know, that, what's the appropriate density for long-term sustainability, looking at, you know, carbon footprint and all kinds of other factors. You know, so those things weighed into it. And at that time, the town board, you know, moved from 100% down to 50. They felt that that was a fair compromise, you know, other than, that's, that's really the history of where we came to the 50%.
So there was a, a bit of a technical sort of look see and then it was like a roll of the dice.
Yeah, yeah. And, and a lot of regulations unfortunately are done that way. The 100-foot wetland buffer was done that way. And then science has caught up and says, you know, can now demonstrate certain values, but it was an arbitrary number.
Do we know with the neighboring, any of our neighbors, do they do 50%?
Most of the communities in Westchester do not do replacement, you know, very few.
So we're, we're.
I do know, I do know that Terry Town has 100% replacement and they don't enforce it because they found that the average applicant said, I can't do this.
It's two owners.
And that's two onerous.
Is there any thought with regard to the tree bank to use it for other worthwhile efforts to save enhanced trees, let's say in parks or otherwise, so that we can use it not only just to plant trees, but it's available for trimming, fertilizing, whatever it might be, and to enhance those efforts?
That's, that's one of the reasons, I mean, that when we did this, the amendments in 2012, we didn't anticipate that there would be, you know, a tree bank that would continue to grow, you know, and we haven't. You know, it's like, it's almost like we're catching up now to realizing that we need more specific criteria and definitions and to add that to the ordinance, but also to come up with language that allows better maintenance and stewardship of existing trees as well as, you know, planting of new trees or replacing trees that may die.
So the question I would have is.
So that's why we've broadened the tree bank fund definition, you know, and that, and that was something that the town board really wanted.
Yeah, I can understand why.
Was to, to be able to give them the flexibility. And the way we set it up is that, you know, there would be, through Sabrina's office and myself, we would, you know, evaluate the, on an annual basis, the program and then recommend projects for the, you know, following year. And then, you know, the tree bank, you know, funds would be appropriated for, you know, specific projects that target improvements.
Especially with all these storms that we've had, I mean, just.
So, but let me just ask a question here because it sounds as though what we're doing is that we are taking money that would otherwise be in the general fund, right? And using the money that was, had originally been slated as this extra bucket to put new trees in. Now we're going to take that money and say, okay, we're not going to spend general fund money to do maintenance anymore. We're going to go ahead and use this money to do general maintenance. And to me, that's a lose-lose proposition. I, I don't see how that, I mean, I can understand why the town board would like to find extra sources of funds. But it seems to me that this fund is set up, should be set up for a special purpose of replacing the trees that are being taken down.
Well, it is.
And let the general fund deal with the things that the general fund should have to deal with, which is parks maintenance.
But if you look at, at the language for the tree bank fund on page 12, I mean, it's, it's set up to be pretty specific. And the, the previous intent was to, you know, have the fund so that you could replace, you know, trees that die or new trees or maintain them. You know, but the, you know, the town board felt that there wasn't enough language to make it more, you know, comprehensive so that it could include, you know, the, you know, the, you know, maintenance of specific trees, you know, you know, as part of the, you know, because my experience is it's fine to plant a new tree, but often on a town budget standpoint is we don't have the, the staff or the resources to maintain it. You know, and, and because of that, a lot of efforts, you know, aren't always, you know, achieved. And that's why, you know, the tree bank broadening the definition, which was the intent, was to provide the ongoing stewardship of trees that are replanted, that kind of thing.
But this, but the tree bank thing only.
It's not to take away from general maintenance or, you know, anything on the, it's not covering any budgets for.
Well, I'm confused now.
Normal budgets at all for the town operations.
I'm confused in that.
And I'm confused now.
The, you, you, in page 12, the maintenance activities are just for the trees that were planted as, from the tree bank, right? Not general maintenance of a park.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thanks.
All right, and so secondly, though, I would say that that should be, that should be limited to whatever the time is that we ask a homeowner to have a bond, whether it be five years or 10 years, and not maintenance of the trees that are replanted somewhere, somewhere else on town property in perpetuity. There comes a time when the tree should be not requiring that much after five or 10 years, you know, that it should go back into general maintenance. That's my recommendation. Can we go back to page four? I have a question for you, Steve. It's, it says under town arborist on page four. You know, that you shall be the town arborist, congratulations. And I assume you have requisite qualifications.
Yes.
So what would that be? A certification?
It's a certification.
Okay, so I think that, you know, you should say the environmental coordinator shall be the town arborist providing he, he slash she has the requisite certification.
I think that's a good comment.
Because while you do, the next person may not understand.
Right.
Well, I think it probably would be a requirement of that job title.
Yeah.
You know, they have it.
But it's always that nice to have the requirements of the job title consistent with the documents that they're supporting.
So, I'm on, still on page.
I mean, there's a definition for arborist here too, which correlates with.
Well, that's for an outside arborist, the way I read it.
Yeah.
So.
They need a license, not a certification.
Okay, well, it's, it's one in the same.
Oh, is it? Okay, good, well then make the words consistent, please.
So on the same page, I, paragraph significant tree list, page four. Significant tree list? That whole paragraph is gone, and so could you explain that?
That was in the original ordinance and the intent, that, my understanding, the intent was to create a volunteer registry of large trees, you know, significant trees, you know, throughout the community. And Westchester County had, maintains a list like the Bedford, Bedford oak is an example, you know, and of the largest trees of each species. And at the time, the conservation board was interested in doing that. It would be totally voluntary, you know, within the community, there wasn't any, any.
Pretty neat idea.
Requirements, it was a neat idea, but it, nothing's ever happened with it since the ordinance was created.
Did anybody go out and tell the prop, get the word out? Because I've got one, I've got a tulip poplar.
So that's why it's been in, it's been in there and, and it creates a lot of confusion because people want to know, well, what trees are on, you know, the significant list? And they get disappointed when they hear there is no list and.
And it's, yeah, yeah. But if it's a significant tree and it's volunteered to be one, isn't it true that the buffer to breathe or walk near it is 200 feet radius? Is that something like that?
It could be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's the reason why I just recommended we delete it. And if, if we want to do something like that in the future, we could.
Well, if you bring it back, I've got a tulip poplar that should be on there.
Ah, geez, okay.
Are we going through this now page by page?
Yeah.
Sure, why not?
I have, I have some pages, some questions on page six regarding the paragraph B, activities under activities permitted by right. So, so it seems to me, the way I read this paragraph B, is that you no longer really have the right to remove a hazardous tree when you see it. And I, I understand there have been a lot of perhaps abuses of this. But it seems to me it no longer allows you to take down a tree without at least verbal approval from the town arborist. So again, going back to my own experiences in the two Halloween storms and then hurricanes, superstorm Sandy, I had trees come down on my house that didn't break through the house, but there they are sitting on my house. And I probably was one of, you know, thousands of Newcastle residents who had trees on their houses. I, I want to get that tree off my house before it breaks through. And I, I imagine you're going to have a pretty big backlog of people getting approval for.
That's why the language says may require.
But may doesn't tell me when I do require it or when I don't require it. May, I may think, I don't need it now, look, it's sitting on my house, only to find out I did need approval to take it off my house. I'm, I'm just, I'm, I just don't see how that works. I don't get it.
I mean, based on the hazardous definition, I mean, that would qualify, so I mean, it would be a no brainer.
Why can't we just say as determined by the town arborist or certified arborist representing the application with presentation of the opinion to the town for the regreting purposes? And it doesn't get into the town arborist requiring, you know, doing the verification and documentation?
To Bob's suggestion, which is these guys should be licensed and they should know.
Well, going back to that, the only reason I knew I needed a wetland permit in 2007 is because I had a very reputable tree contractor who, when we were discussing the scope of what I wanted to do, said, you can't do this without talking to Steve Coleman, you got to get a permit. I think you need a permit. That's exactly how I found out about it, otherwise I would have done it and had no, no idea that I needed a permit.
Exactly.
So yes, making sure that you have reputable, licensed, certified arborist working in the town, I think, is very important.
But my experience is that is not always the case.
Yeah.
Well, then, but then do you want to be in control of every dead tree in the?
No, no, I didn't want to do that. I mean, the attempt is to try to have some handle on reducing, you know, when you get a call from a homeowner, I have a hazardous tree I'm taking in town. And then when I, you know, go out there because the neighbor complains, I find it's a perfectly healthy tree.
But you see, there's no.
It's just in the wrong place for them.
So, I think.
But there are extenuating circumstances sometimes that aren't recognized here and I don't know how you deal with that.
Well, maybe, maybe just.
I would suggest.
Softening the language or making it a little bit.
No, make it harder.
Or make it harder.
It's, it may require verification. I think that you ought to list the, the conditions under which you would require verification. Because make it as softer, I don't know what that.
I have another way of doing it.
Otherwise, just, just get rid of B altogether if you're going to make it softer.
I have another way. You say, you go with as determined by the town arborist or a certified arborist representing the applicant who files within 20 days a photographic evidence and a written opinion as to the condition of the tree. That way you get the record. If the tree comes down, you don't have a record, then you go after the homeowner.
Yeah, but I, yeah, and some, I, I do find that a lot of homeowners don't want to spend the money on paying for a professional.
You got a lot of trees, you got a, that's a nurse.
I tend to understand that because if you have 10 trees that get snapped in a storm, you know, that's a tremendous cost and a burden to the homeowner. And if they got to pay an arborist to evaluate and then.
Yeah, I mean, take it too extreme. Let's say you own 10 acres and you have a bunch of dead ashes in the middle of there, nowhere near anybody. You want to take them down. You got to have Steve come out, walk through the woods to tell, okay, these are dead, take them down.
So I have a recommendation.
I had five dead ash that were part of my, part of my application.
I had two died. I mean, I, I mean, I guess it would be ideal if people took their dead ashes down because those are taking out the telephone poles and all the lines. But a lot of people probably aren't going to do it because of, oh, I got to deal with all this stuff.
So, in most cases, because of the, you know, the, you know, the knowledge of what's happening to ash trees when someone calls, I often don't require a permit. Yeah, because we know that they're, you know, on their way out or.
And you keep a diary or something?
I, I have, I'm going to interrupt because I have a suggestion here. We're not writing this legislation, we're making comments to the town board. So we'll just make a comment that we're concerned about this language.
Yes, and we can move on then.
See how we can make it better. Or rely on Jen and her staff have been really helpful.
I'm up to page 10, anybody before that?
Yeah, I, I have something to work.
I'm on nine, real quick.
I'm on seven.
You win, Sheila.
You win.
So this goes back.
Which page?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. This is under five and six. So this goes to the comment that I said before about whether we're creating things that are too onerous and, and are out of step with other towns and might be disadvantaging our town. This is the kind of, the, the steps that are outlined in five and six are the kind of steps that we see on planning board applications with projects. And that, that's fair. But as I'm reading it, it looks like it could apply to any project. So if, so again, if I were coming in to take down a few trees and replant a few trees and it triggers a tree permit, would I have to inventory my entire property? And, which is how it, how it reads to me?
Inventory those to be removed.
It's only those to be removed. Yeah, it's just to be removed.
Okay, proposed to be removed, okay. Tree replacement plan based on the tree requirements.
But isn't to Sheila's question, we're getting down to pretty small trees if we're starting to inventory four-inch DBH? Isn't that really saplings?
They are.
I miss.
Well, they're considered a little bit bigger than saplings.
Right, right, yeah, I, I, I misspoke, I did it on purpose, it's hyperbole, but it seemed like it's.
I mean, the other, you know, one thought which, you know, could probably work is we have a clearing action, you know, as part of a regulated activity, which is 10 or more trees.
Right.
You know, one thought, you know, to make it maybe less onerous would be to say, you know, that this would be required for clearing action or, you know, circumstances that, you know, the environmental coordinator feels, you know, more information is needed or something like that.
But when you start dealing with 10, then these four-inch ones will start being counted toward the 10, right?
Yeah, but the reason we did the four-inch was for the regulated, you know, setback. So thinking that, you know, we wanted to try to maintain, you know, natural buffers between homes. And, you know, that's the reason for the smaller diameter is to, you know, try to. is to, you know, try to encourage homeowners to maintain a buffer. I mean, my experience is in multiple cases, we have a homeowner that applies for a permit to remove trees within the buffer, and then I go out there and the neighbor has lawn right to the property line, and I always feel that's a fairness issue, you know. Do you penalize the person that's applying for the permit, you know, when the neighbor has no buffer? You know, and, and, you know, that, that always becomes a problem with.
Do we have a measurement for landscape buffers?
Yeah, and it's in the, it's spelled out per the zoning code. You know, a quarter acre, a half acre, one acre and two acre, and the distances.
Okay.
There's a typo in six A.
I'm on 10. Anybody got anything before page 10?
Someone said nine.
Six A, where's the typo?
Uh, property lines.
Do you think that doing it just for, you know, clearing action would make sense or?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
On page seven?
You said six, six, oh, six A?
Six A, on page seven.
Ah, six A on seven. Oh, yeah.
Property lines.
Property lines, I.
Properly.
Properly.
Properly lines?
Properly.
Properly identified and fixed, okay.
Page 10?
Yeah.
Anybody?
10?
10.
I'm on 10.
Back to 10, and, um, I, I want to just ask about this aggregate diameter of trees removed. In what way is that, I mean, I would have thought it would be number of trees rather than the aggregate. I mean, I, I would have thought that the intent is to replace the canopy to the extent possible rather than to, rather than the amount of wood, you know, I mean, trunk size.
When we looked at it back, when we did the initial amendments, there's two schools of thought. One is to do it per acre, you know, number of trees per acre. You know, and the other is to look at, you know, the other bigger factors like carbon footprint and, you know, the value of different sized trees. And that's why the diameter approach is used more.
Is carbon footprint the primary criteria?
Well, that's one, that's one of them, the greenhouse effect, you know, the evapotranspiration. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, different, you know, environmental benefits.
What about habitat?
Of trees, same thing with habitat too.
Yeah.
You know, so that's why getting the density through diameter, the theory is.
So, three big trees is better than 10 small ones?
And, depending on what parameters you use. I mean, that's the problem is there's so much science that both are beneficial. Yeah, but they, you know, bigger, larger trees provide a certain benefit, and smaller, younger trees also provide.
Yep.
You know, so it's just a.
Okay, I have, I, and F?
On page 10?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not done with this, though. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
No, that's okay. Just one more. See, I, to me, it's, it's, I understand all of that, all those environmental sort of benefits and effects. I mean, I don't understand them in detail, but I get the concept. I wonder if we shouldn't also be concerned about just the overall extent of the canopy from an aesthetic point of view. And you can create a meadow, take out 50 trees, put in, you know, four that are, meet the criteria, but you've essentially transformed the landscape as a consequence. And that's just a comment we're not going to resolve this year.
No, I know. It's a, you know, one of the things that I added, which we didn't have in, on page 10, you know, if you look at number D.
Yeah, but this is the criteria.
D through I.
Yes, it would. It could.
You know, those are, the attempt is to.
It's not just us.
Try to get more definition in the tree replacement because what I often find with, you know, even with, you know, developers like, you know, Woods, Witch Lane, and Heathcote and others is their tendency is they want to just put evergreens in.
Yeah.
You know, for screening to satisfy, you know, a tree replacement.
A, a good example.
Yeah, so we're looking, what I added the language here is to make sure that we get the diversity of species.
Right, I got that.
Having, you know, tall canopy to address, you know, like you were mentioning, Tom, you know, the canopy trees, understory, and then adding the, the replacement of, you know, shrubs as well, you know, the equivalent of, you know, to do that so that we get, you know, the structural diversity within.
I think that's a good idea, but I have a, a question about the math when we get to F and G.
Sure.
I'm done.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Thank you. F and G, in your quest for diversity, you have locked yourself in.
Yeah, minimum 75 and minimum 25.
That's a minimum of 100%, so there's no latitude in the percentages as to what kind of trees are you putting in. And it's not clear what happens when you have large shrubs with eight-inch diameter, how they're replaced. Because if, if you have existing understory which is taken out and it's measured, and then how does it fit in this equation? So, I think you have to work on this equation that F and G kind of constitute. All right, because the understory you mentioned, but you have a place back there where you say certain understory trees are trees, not shrubs. All right, and then, in I, the first line, to meet the required tree replacement.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm on 11, and this is my last comment. It's number two. It's determination approval authority, the environmental impact of the proposed removal. It seems to me that that's, that's a wide open criteria. And under six, you begin to spell the, the criteria out. I wonder if all those items under number six ought to just move up to under number two, and maybe they may supplement a little bit more to define environmental impact. And then with that, I'm done.
Okay, good. And, um, I, oh.
I have something on 12. Do you have something on 12?
No, no, I'm, I'm jumped, I jumped ahead.
I want to go back to the paragraph that Jennifer highlighted under the Tree Bank Fund, A on page 12. So, um, so in the definition of Tree Bank Fund, it says something like where tree replanting cannot, cannot be met on site. But here, it's saying, or because the applicant chooses not to fulfill the tree replacement requirements by planting trees on site, which seems to give the applicant control over that equation. And so in other words, let's say somebody clear-cut their property, and now they have to do tree replacement, but they don't want to do it on their property. They want to do, they just want to pay a sum of money into the Tree Bank Fund. This would seem to give them the ability to say to an approving authority, I don't want to replace on site. I want to pay into the Tree Bank Fund.
I'd just rather have grass on a hill and no trees to ruin my gush.
Jennifer's point was that there is a conflict there, and we need to recommend which one to do.
Oh, okay.
And I think leading towards the other one and not this one.
Well, I think you can split the baby in half and do a compromise. It doesn't have to be that the applicant gets to, to say, I'm going to avoid the whole damn thing 100%. I've got the money. I know it's extra money, but I'd rather have this, the scenic view that I have, even though that creates other problems with steep slopes and soil erosion and everything else. So, I would recommend there's a position where this only applies to, um, you know, where you can't plant but 50%. I'm looking at a 50% number, Sam. You have to try to get 50% in of the rule requirement. If you can't, then we'll let you, you know, you don't have to do it. If you could get 75% in, we'll let you do 50%.
Well, leave it, leave it to the discretion of the approval authority.
Yes.
The circumstances are such that it makes sense to not replant, replant all of the trees that would have otherwise been required.
I don't know how that's possible.
Physical site constraints.
I don't know how all is possible. Well, it, it is.
All of the 50% that are required.
Well, if, if it's all of the 50% that are required, then that's fine.
Yeah.
But if it's, if he wants to, if someone wants to knock down 500 trees and pay the fine, if you would, or the penalty, then that isn't going to help us when we're trying to protect steep slopes, erosion.
Yeah, they should be able to do that.
So, I think there's a requirement that needs to be met except for physical site constraints that make it impossible or accept as otherwise determined by the approval authority, just to leave.
Well, okay.
Discretion.
Escape valve.
Because, because better.
Because actually, every site's different, you know.
Exactly. You can't legislate for all circumstances.
But to leave it this way, I mean, it's, you have to project it's not just the individual homeowner. It's, it's the developer coming in with 10 lots, so he goes, I don't want this.
Put it in a soccer field. You got to cut down a bunch of trees. You can't plant trees back in the field. I mean, it's going to be situations that pop up.
Well, that's a special permit. They're not going to get that one.
That's why I think, you know, the language was set up that way is to.
Yeah.
You know, that it, you know, unless, you know, there's due to site constraints because there's too many.
Okay, page 13. Anybody before me?
Nope.
Okay, 13, 121.10B. We've been using 10-year monitoring plans and maintenance bonds, and why are we regressing back to five? Except for the fact we don't have authorization to do 10.
Right.
It's not in the reg. I would like to see.
It has been.
Minimum of five.
A minimum of five.
With discretion.
Yes, with discretion.
What is set up here is based on the number of trees, you know, that if it's 10.
Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it's five-year, and then it's, you know, if it's over 10, it's five-year plus a maintenance bond. You know, so we could change it to be.
A minimum of five. Yeah, a minimum of five, and then, and.
With discretion available to approval authority for longer.
That's right.
Doesn't have to be 10. It could be seven, right?
Yes, that's exactly right. I mean, the worst the removal is, and the least, you know, the less you trust that it can be done right, or you don't trust the people, you want to have 10 years, so there's more time to get it established. But there are some places where they already are foresters.
Yep.
Okay, good.
They know how to do it.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah. How do we, you know, you have the fines on page 16.
I have just a question about a wording, whether it's a typo or not, on page 15.
15.
15, four, tree permit, which is the subject of the appeal, shall be stay.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Is it a S-T-A-Y-E-D?
Okay, yeah.
S-T-A.
This is kind of calm, stayed.
I thought maybe it was a legal ease term that I couldn't find a definition for.
Latin or something.
Very, very, very old English.
I wasn't there that day.
That was the attorney's writing, so I.
Ah, yeah.
Had to be accurate.
All right.
Not her, one of the board members on the, you know.
All right, a question on money, and then I'm going to go home.
Attorney's get paid for a lot of things.
On page 16, how old are these numbers?
Which numbers?
In 17. Penalty.
A.
Those penalties, those numbers were created when we did the amend, amendment in 2012.
2012, so they're already six years old? And the numbers for trees have stayed the same or gone down?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't recommended any changes to that.
Well, there's a.
The number of permits in that has pretty much stayed consistent.
We're buying less and less every year, inflation, right?
Yeah. I mean, there is a, there is a provision in the, in the ordinance that it can be, you know, the town board, you know, adjusts the fees and, you know, things. But I, I don't know if that relates to.
These are fines, not fees.
Well, these are fines.
These are different than fines.
These are different than, okay.
Excuse me. Thank you. When were the fees established? The same, 2013, the fees?
No.
They're established every year.
They're established every year by town board, yeah.
Okay.
They are.
And there's a.
Okay, that answers all my questions.
I mean, is your question to increase them or?
I just want to make sure it was a fair price.
Yeah.
Not one that's favorable to someone.
Compared to most other towns, but.
Because it's per tree, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So moved.
All except for the parking now?
Oh, no.
Mercifully, that's only two pages.
Is this tailored for the, the application? Is this something that's specifically tailored for the application we heard before?
Boy, that sure seemed like it today.
For, I'm sorry, to go back to the tree, are we doing a memo to the town board based on these comments? Is it coming back to you guys? Is, or is it being drafted for Bob's review?
Memo, I guess, right, to the town board?
Do you want to do it?
It has to be to the town board, and the question is, do you want it to go back to you, Bob, as the chairman? Or do you want, does the entire board want to see it?
I think there's enough comments here, so I think everyone should take a crack, look, crack at it.
Okay, then that's what we will do for the next meeting.
I have to excuse myself.
I think it depends on Janice and Steve.
Yeah, okay.
For your information, they have a public hearing start, it starts on April 10th.
What's that?
The public hearing for the tree ordinance is on April 10th. So, I don't know if there would be time before that.
I think there's another, don't we have an April? Good night, Dick.
Of April 3rd, maybe?
Yeah.
So, we have also now a referral on the draft law for the group instruction parking.
Will be opened.
That was the one that I made earlier.
I think it's a very good point, the elasticity.
Which has, yeah, has to do with the application to, to, to different residential zones of density. And whether maybe that needs to be looked at again.
Okay, so this local law is amending the standards that are applicable for special permits for group instructions, right? One of those standards is that off-street parking shall be provided an amount determined adequate for the particular use by the planning board. It's being proposed to be changed to the zoning board because the zoning board is the approval authority for the special permit to streamline the process. And I guess the question was, you know, the distinctions between parking requirements for the different districts. If you have a group instruction in an R2A district versus a quarter acre district, it could be different, different issues presented by both. So, in the schedule of new regulations for residential districts, R2A, R1A, R half acre, and R quarter acre, as far as uses go, are all treated equally. So, if it's a special permit in an R2A, it's also a special permit in a, in a quarter acre district. So, I think there, that goes back to the sort of case-by-case analysis undertaken by the approval authority. A special permit for group instruction on a lot that's a quarter acre, they're going to look at the off-street parking requirements a little differently, and they're going to apply these standards a little differently than a group instruction being proposed on a two-acre lot.
Because, because of the requirement for parking associated with, with that use? I mean, when you say they're going to look at it differently, in what way?
There's, there's certain criteria.
So.
Yeah, so is parking one of the criteria?
Right, so if you have.
Character of the neighborhood.
A group instruction for 10 people, there's going to be 10, well, I guess it has to be limited to five pupils. Okay, so five pupils in a group instruction on a quarter acre lot, the parking requirements for that, the approval authority is going to have to determine that based on what the demand is for the instruction, right? And also the available site constraints. Maybe on a quarter acre lot, you may not be able to accommodate. Right, you may exceed coverage requirements.
Maybe coverage is your protection, except for a special permit.
There, there's also, getting to the discussion, there's also, there's certain standards that have to be met with a special permit. And those standards, some of them relate to the community character aspect of the special permit. And in a quarter acre zoning district, when you, there's no room on the property to park five cars in addition to the two that are allocated towards the principal use, there's really no area. And in order to identify an area, you have all the other regulations that come into play.
Well, like setback and, and coverage and so on.
Yeah, exactly.
But I, I, I have yet, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm missing something, but I've yet to have the, the community character actually mean anything in any of the things that we've done, you know, especially with respect to special permit. It seems like it, to me, it seems like it's not.
I, I could be.
More in the breach than the observance.
But there's, there's, community, I use community character as a catch-all for, there's four standards that some of them relate to that issue of consistency with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I got it.
So.
So, I, I, a question on uses. If, we'll use the applicant that was here earlier. They want to do a cooking school in a residential district, and they're going to have a, a group. How is that different than if you have a business out of your home in a residential district, and you've got five employees, you've got employees or clients coming to your house that could have five or six cars? How is that different than this?
We have, we have, we have regulations for that. Yeah, it's a different use category.
In my neighborhood, there was a guy who was running a business. He had, he had 20 cars parked in his driveway. Neighbors called up and complained, so he asked the neighbor next door if I could park my employees in your driveway, which they did. And he had 20 cars parked over two driveways, and everybody in the neighborhood went ballistic because he was running a business there. And it was just all those cars coming into a quiet.
It's the commercialization of a residential.
Eventually, you moved.
No, eventually, he had to move out because his business did so well that he had to get a bigger place in Mount Kisco. But if his business didn't thrive, he would have still been on that little residential street and.
Oh, and, and I would, I would.
That's violation.
Yeah, and I'd say that that's not a permitted use in the residential district, and that notification shouldn't have been provided to my office.
The cross street called repeatedly, and the town said, it's, it's permitted by use, and if he's not parking on the public street, if he's parking in driveways, it's okay.
I would question who they spoke to when they called, to be quite honest with you. Because we, we have required people who were running businesses out of their homes to obtain storefronts in commercial areas in order to continue their businesses due to delivery schedules, employees, and all of those things that you are, are calling out right now.
It might have been when the building inspector went out, the cars weren't there.
So, is it, so are we?
I mean, this was like eight years ago.
Yeah, so we've changed our processes since eight years ago.
Are we concluding that there are already enough protections in our codes so that this parking thing is not going to be a problem?
I think it's, it's. I think it's, it's, it's just that what the change is, is the change in who's going to be making the determination on what is adequate off-street parking.
I understand that you tend to change. I'm, I'm to the criteria. Now, with respect to the change, I have no problem with the change.
Okay.
Myself.
Yeah, but, but just to inform you, as, as I always do, and I discuss it with Bob, you know, the applicant that was before you came before the zoning board and we did a, we examined the parking requirements. We examined the turning radius. We examined the area and the safety, the site distances. We did all that and recommended to the zoning board that it seemed appropriate as we forwarded our memos to you. You know, when we look at the campfire club application-
So, what's your point?
You asked if there was enough protections to make sure that parking was being addressed adequately. I would say yes.
So, we have it from the staff level and also we have final licks anyway, right? Because it's going to be referred to us anyway.
Referred, yeah. So, you'll have an opportunity to provide your recommendation as well.
I'm good with that.
Okay.